All right, I have recent links to Alder McKinney and Alder Morland.
Thank you. We'll wait at least for Alder Alboras since he requested the link.
And can someone send a link to Alder Morland?
She can't get in.
It should be coming at her.
Okay, great. All right, I see Alder Alboras has joined us. But we're still looking for Alder Morland and Alder Harrington McKinney.
Alder Alboras, yes?
Yeah, I was having a significant amount of technical difficulties more than usual, so.
Okay, good to hear you, all right.
We'll give Alder Morland a minute more. Has anyone heard from Alder Harrington McKinney? She was in CCEC. Yep.
Alder Morland is here.
Thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June 2, 2020. I will unmute you all, ask staff to mute themselves, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alder Furman. Alder Furman is still muted.
Whitman, please.
Is it possible to unmute the Alders again?
They should all be unmuted. Alder Furman, I think you're, hmm.
Be inclusive, not exclusive when it comes to your family.
Okay, present.
Thank you. Alder Furman is present.
Again, I will ask staff to mute themselves.
Alder Harrington McKinney, still no, okay. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present, Alder Henneck is excused, Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present, Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Lemmer has waved, she's here. Alder Martin.
Here.
Alder Martin is present, Alder Morland. I could see Alder Morland, so she's present. Alder Prestigiacomo. Alder Prestigiacomo is present, I can see him. Alder Rummel. Alder Rummel waved, she's present, Alder Skidmore. Alder Skidmore is present, Alder Tierney. Alder Tierney is present. Alder Verve.
Here.
Alder Verve is present, Alder Abass.
Present.
Alder Abass is present, Alder Alboras.
Here.
Alder Alboras is present, Alder Balday. Alder Balday is present, I can see him. Alder Bedar.
Present.
Alder Bedar is present, Alder Carter.
Present.
Carter is present, Alder Evers. Alder Evers, who is here. Oh, yes, I can see him. Alder Evers is present, Alder Foster. Alder Foster is here, he's unmuted. Madam Mary of Quorum.
Thank you. It appears that even with unmuting everyone, it is still giving some people trouble in letting themselves unmute, so we'll just watch it, and if you're having issues, please raise your hand. We'll watch the screen.
Madam Mayor, if I can. One of the things that was updated in Zoom over the weekend is that it now requests people to consent to be unmuted, so they likely will get a little pop-up asking them to, if they are will, you know, can be unmuted. So you'll have to click on that to say yes before you actually get unmuted.
All right, well, we'll hope for the best here, and if people still have trouble, please raise your hands. All right, and I don't know which of you is reading the statement tonight, but I am trying to unmute both of you.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting, we're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The Chair Clerk and Tech Facilitator are responsible for muting and on-muting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the Common Council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I am going to start by turning over the floor to Council President Carter, if you would unmute yourself, and for opening remarks.
Thank you. As we all know, this has been a challenging week, starting with the death of George Floyd. And before I ask for a moment of silence, I want to read a state, a statement that Attorney Trump did at his press conference, which I thought was so pertinent. And if any of you saw George's brothers that went to the scene yesterday, you will understand what I am reading. Attorney Trump said, "Let's remember to take a breath for America. Let's take a breath for George Floyd. Let's take a breath for peace. Let's take a breath for justice. And let's, and let's take a breath to heal our country." And at that, can we have a moment of silence? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Alder Carter. We'll now move to suspension of the rules, Alder Carter.
Yes, suspension of the rules. 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for Items So Designated on the Agenda.
Thank you, President Carter, it's been moved. Vice President Abass, if you can unmute yourself, thank you, moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to suspending, to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? If you object, please use the raise hand function. Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules, and the rules are suspended. That takes us to item number one, which is a presentation, and it is my absolute pleasure to introduce Angie Trudell Vasquez, who is our poet laureate here in the city of Madison, so she can introduce our poet for the night. And Angie and I, if you could both use the raise hand function, so I can find you easier. Let's see.
They are unmuted.
There you go. Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you so much, it's my pleasure to introduce IS Jones, a queer American-Nigerian poet and music journalist. She is a graduate fellow with the Watering Hole and holds fellowships from Callelou, Boet, Writers Retreat, and Brooklyn Poets. IS hosts a month-long workshop every April called "The Singing Bullet." She is a book editor with Indulent Books, editor at 20.35 Africa, an anthology of contemporary poetry, freelances for Complex, Ear Milk, NBC News Think, and elsewhere. Her works have appeared or are forthcoming in Guernica, Washington Square Review, The Rumpus, Hesperios the Offing, The Shade Journal, Knapp Brute, Prittle de Soul, and elsewhere. She is the co-editor of the Young African Poets Anthology and is currently guest editing for Lowey. Her work has, was chosen by me for one of the Bus Line Poetry Competition winners. She is an MFA candidate in poetry at UW-Madison, as well as the inaugural 2019-2020 Kemper Nap University Fellowship recipient. She splits her time between Southern California and New York. It is my great pleasure to introduce IS Jones.
Thank you so much for that, Angie, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all the aldermen who are still gracious enough to let me be here in this space. I'm thinking deeply about where we are right now, both Madison and also the nation, and I'm thinking that the protesting is important, speaking out is important, but also re-centering joy is equally important too in that endeavor. So to that end, it's my pleasure to read this poem, "The Garden." "I praise you," says the sunflower to the day, and each one raises their heads towards the majesty of light. Every morning Baba opens the day the same, pulls the sun from his great shoulders, drapes its luminous tapestry above my head. Tell me, oh widening field, is a true sunflowers face each other to pray in the absence of God? Does the ruby-throated hummingbird bow in dusty gold nectar of the tender buds? And what of the gold-winged warblers, the ones who chase each other into the blinding sky? What gifts the ladybugs her red? This one, right here, who walks between my eyes and loses herself in the dense forest of my hair? I can ask the world anything I want, because today I own my life. Today, I hide from Baba in the tall grass. I don't have hands for labor, but I know what devotion is, to lose myself completely in the peopleless kingdom, how my girlish legs swing above me in eclipse heaven. All day, I listen to the earth's singular song. I want nothing else but this. Let me stay a child a little longer." Thank you.
Thank you so much, you're getting a virtual round of applause, I hope you can see that. And thank you, Angie, for bringing IS to us tonight. That's a wonderfully centering way to start our meeting. All right. Invite everybody to take a deep breath with me. And that will bring us to item number two. President Carter, a motion.
Yeah.
Move six, number two, 60692, recognized in June 2020 as Pride Month. Vice President Abass.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt, and I will unmute a few of our Alders who are going to read this. Alder Lemmer, I've lost you temporarily, let me find you. There you go, you should all be asked to unmute Alders Lemmer, Verve, and Heck, I don't know what order you're going in.
Thank you, I will get us started. Whereas LGBTQ+ Pride was started by the Stonewall Rebellion of 1969, led by a black and brown LGBTQ+ people. And whereas, in 1969, just months after the Stonewall uprising, the Madison Alliance for Homosexual Equality was founded as Wisconsin's first gay rights organization. And whereas, in 1973, Judy Greenspan was the first out lesbian in the nation to run for the Madison School Board, after she and others had been denied the right to speak in Madison high schools. And whereas, the city of Madison in 1975 became the first place in Wisconsin and one of the earliest in the country to ban discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation by amending its Equal Opportunities Ordinance. And whereas, Alder Jim Eden was appointed to the City Council in fall of 1976, and elected in the spring of 1977, and was the first openly gay man elected to a city council in the United States. And whereas, when the Madison Equal Rights Ordinance came under attack from an anti-gay movement motivated by activist Anita Bryant in 1978, Madison successfully defended its ordinance, even though similar anti-discrimination ordinances were repealed in state capitals like St. Paul, Minnesota, and Eugene, Oregon. And whereas, in 1982, Madison State Representative David Clarence Bach skillfully led the first, or excuse me, led the fight to pass a first-in-the-nation state gay rights law, which was signed by Republican Governor Lee Sherman-Dreyfus, and?
Whereas, the Fifth Annual Conference of Gay and Lesbian Officials was hosted in Madison in 1989 at the state capitol, with a local host committee chaired by Dane County Supervisors Dick Wagner and Tammy Baldwin. And whereas, black and brown LGBTQI people have been leaders in advancing social change, creating and shifting culture. And whereas, Ricardo Gonzalez was the first openly gay Latino official elected to public office in the United States when he was elected to Madison City Council in 1989. And whereas, Alder Jim McFarland created the state's first domestic partnership registry in 1980 by ordinance, affording limited rights to same-sex couples. And whereas, in 2000, the city became the first place in Wisconsin to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity by amending the Equal Opportunities Ordinance. And whereas, Dane County Supervisor Tammy Baldwin became the first openly LGBTQ+ member of the Wisconsin State Assembly in 1993. And then, the first openly LGBTQ+ non-incumbent elected to the US House of Representatives in 1998, and became the first out LGBTQ+ US Senator in our nation's history in 2013. And whereas, Dane County Supervisor Mark Pocan became the first openly gay man to be elected to the state assembly in 1998, and became the first openly gay non-incumbent married man to be elected to United States Congress in 2012. And?
Whereas, Outreach LGBT Community Center was founded in 1998 with the merger of the United and Madison Gay Lesbian Resource Center, and continues its mission or commitment to equity and equality of life for all LGBTQ+ people through community building, health and human services, and economic, social, and racial justice advocacy. And whereas, Freedom Inc. created in 2003 as Madison's first nonprofit with the focus and mission on ending violence against black and Southeast Asian LGBTQI and fighting for their rights, dignities, and wellness. And whereas, Alianza Latina, now known as Origula, or Origulo Latin Act, to build a, has been working since 2007 to build a just place for the Latinx LGBTQ+ community in Dane County. And whereas, in 2015, Wisconsin Board retired US Army Colonel transgender Advocate Sherry Swakowsky, the highest-ranking transgender veteran, who was the first woman to legitimately wear an Army infantry uniform. Swakowsky is also the first person to have been granted an official change of gender marker on their military record. And whereas, Satya Rhodes Conway was elected the city's of Madison's first openly lesbian mayor on April 2, 2019. And whereas, the city of Madison has a proud history of protecting LGBTQ+ rights and advancing LGBTQ+ equality. And whereas, the city of Madison recognizes the LGBTQ+ community as an important part of the diversity of the greater Madison community, and appreciates their contributions to our economy, culture, neighborhoods, and city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Madison declares June 2020 as Pride Month in the city of Madison.
Thank you, Alders. I want to note that we also have one registrant, Karen L. Miscaman of Sherman Terrace, in support and not wishing to speak. Is the, it has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of passage? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of passage. And we'll move on to petitions and communications, item number three. President Carter, a motion to refer for introduction?
Yes, Legisar 60621, petition received in the city of Madison's Clerk's Office on 5/19/2020 from Betty Real Estate LLC, refer for introduction.
Vice President Abass.
Second to refer for introduction.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor, and that item is introduced. That will bring us to the consent agenda. President Carter, I will, I'm still checking the registrants list, but I believe that we need to exclude item number 80. In addition to the items that were already listed on your consent agenda. And if you'd like to move and read the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Items number one, I'm sorry, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and three, items which alderpersons have separated out for discussion, for discussions or debate purposes. And you said item number 80 is not going to be on here? Okay.
Item number 80 should be excluded, it's an item requested for exclusion.
Okay, great. The following ALRC public hearing items are recommended from their meeting on 5/20/820. Item 16, Legisar 60630, grant with all existing premises and condition to carry over to new license year. Item 20.
Each of these items is a public hearing item, so we can just take them up when we move through them? And, and you, as long as you move the correct recommendation from the consent agenda, I don't think you need to read through them now.
Okay. Okay. So, we're back to item 73. Wait, wait, wait. I got two things going on here, sorry about that. Okay, so items with that be 73 and 74, am I in the right area now?
Yes, items that will be on the consent agenda with additional recommendations.
Correct, so item 73, Legisar 60648, and all of these have additional recommendations that I am recommending the actions for. Item 73, so item 74, Legisar 60649. Item 75, 60650. That one, I will say placed on file without prejudice. Item 76, 60652, again, placed on file without prejudice. Item 77, 60653. Item 78, 60654, that's we refer to the ALRC. Items 101, 60615. Item 110, it's a substitute, 60249. And that item is also recommended to be placed on file. Our exclusion list is item 6, 60680, reaffirming the city of Madison's commitment to supporting Pollinator Health. Items 132, 60762, approving the mayor declaration of emergency, state of emergency exists for the city of Madison. Item 133, 60763, denouncing the murder of African-Americans across the United States without consequences. Items to refer from the floor. Items 34, 60764, Internet. And I believe, and that's recommended to CCEC Finance and Common Council, and I believe there was one other. This is the amended.
Alder, I have, actually, item number 36 is the Pollinator Health. That must be a typo. And then, item 80 is requested for exclusion, item 132 and 133?
Yes, I mentioned 132 and 133, this is the second update, was there a third update?
No, I think we're, the second update is the correct version.
Okay, and I thought there was another one after 134, but maybe not.
All right, just so, we haven't lost anybody in that.
Well, you lost me.
So, we have items four through 33, which are public hearing items, and we will take up each of those recommendations. There's a number printed on your consent agenda paper, just so we make sure that we have the right motions. And then items that are on the consent agenda with additional recommendations are the items that President Carter read, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 101, and 110. Items requested for exclusion are 36, 80, 132, and 133. And one item is introduced from the floor for referral, item number 134. And that recommended action is CCEC Finance and back to counsel on the 16th. So, that's a motion, President Carter?
Yes, it is.
And a second, Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Thank you. And so then I just want to note for the counsel, I see a number of Alders that wish to speak, so let's work that through before I go ahead. Alder Rommel?
I would like to be registered as voting no on number 109, the ceasing of the Committee on the Environment.
The clerk will note that. Thank you, Alder.
Here we go. I'm sorry, I know that this isn't the right time to bring it up, but I was made aware that Tyson Vitale from Outreach registered in support and wishing to speak for item number two, so perhaps we can come back to that after this vote.
Alder, that's not showing up on our registration system. So perhaps one of our tech facilitators can see if that's stuck somewhere. But thank you, Alder, for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, thank you.
And Vice President Abbas?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to exclude item 110.
Item 110 will be added to the items for exclusion. Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was having some technical difficulties. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to the Honoring Resolution, number 60692, please.
Alder Harrington McKinney, clerk has got that, and we'll add you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking this might be a point of order, but in regards to 134, obviously, we received a lot of emails around this urging action, and so, as it states, it's on the agenda for referral without debate, and just wondering if perhaps the city attorney could just give an explanation of our ability or inability to take that item up tonight?
Alder, can we defer that? Just, there's a couple other Alders, or one other Alder with his hand raised to see, and then we can take that question up. I'll come back to it, thank you. Alder Alboras?
I got booted out of the meeting, so I apologize if you had already asked me to speak a moment ago. But, yeah, I just have a procedural question with regard to Agenda Item 9. So I don't know if it's an appropriate time to maybe have staff just clarify for me.
Alder, item number nine is a public hearing item, so we'll take it up in order. And you can ask your procedural question then? If that's all right?
Yep, that works, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so then we'll come back to Alder Foster's question for our city attorney. And if I can get the attorney to please raise your hand, using the raise hand button. There you are. Attorney Haas? Can you speak to Alder Foster's question, please? You should be unmuted.
Sure, thank you. We did have a chance to take a look at this question today as to whether or not this item could be discussed on the floor. In short, my conclusion was that it could not, that the council could not use the suspensions of rules to discuss this item. It really has to do with the fair notice to the public, given what is noticed on the agenda, that the item would not be, it would be introduced for referral only without debate, and the past practice of the council not to discuss those items. I think if the council would like to start the practice of allowing the discussion and debate and possible action on those items, it should provide the public with more notice than simply suspending the rules on the evening of the meeting.
Thank you, attorney. Alder, did you have additional questions?
No, I just thought that would be good to share with the public.
Thank you very much, Alder. All right. So, again, for everyone's benefit, the consent agenda, we will be taking up Agenda Items number four through number 33 as public hearing items. We have additional recommendations for consent agenda items 73 through 78 and 101. We will be excluding from the consent agenda numbers 36, 80, 110, 132, and 133. And we have an introduction from the floor of item 134. I will note here that we have registrants in, a registrant in support of item number 36, which is reaffirming the city of Madison's commitment to supporting pollinator health. Annette Lang of Nice Bridge Road in support, not wishing to speak. On item number 103, which is approving a certified survey map, property owned by the University of Wisconsin Medical Foundation and Avenue Shops LLC at 4122 East Town Boulevard. We have Jeff Taurus of Tower Drive in Beaver Dam in support and available to answer questions. On item 115, which is amending the police department's 2021 capital budget, we have 16, yes, 16 registrants in opposition, not wishing to speak. You should all receive that list when you get the registrations. On item 134, pardon me while I scroll, Agenda Item 134, which is creating the MPD Ad hoc Recommendation Oversight Committee. I will note for anybody who is, anybody in the public who is watching or is in attendance, item number 134 is on our agenda for introduction only. We will not be taking public comment or discussing or voting on it tonight, but I encourage you all to attend the meeting where we will be taking public comment and discussing and voting on it. And I'm just checking. It's referred for introduction. I imagine the next chance would be the 616 meeting. Similarly, for the next two items. But for Alder's notice, we have 372 people registered in support of item number 134, and six registered in opposition. On item 135, which is also for introduction only, we have 23 registered in support. And on item number 136, which is also for introduction only, we have 19 registered in support. And again, those last three items are for introduction only, so we will not be taking them up tonight, and we will not be taking speakers on those items. Vice President Abbas?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I apologize. I would like to withdraw my request for exclusion for file number, item, Agenda Item number 110. Actually, I had a few questions, but more I think about it, I will have those questions at a different platform.
Thank you, Alder. So, item number 110 is back on the consent agenda with the additional recommendations as noted. All right, so then, do any Alders have additional items for exclusion? Alder Evers?
No additional items, only to express my dismay that we did not take up item 134 for debate and discussion tonight, that's all. I'm deeply disappointed.
I understand your disappointment, Alder. It is the rules that the council creates for itself.
I understand, but I wish our council president would have taken the initiative to introduce under suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Alder. All right, then, are there any additional items for exclusion, or are there any disclosures or recusals from any Alders on any items on the consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll just confirm that the items requested for exclusion are 36, 80, 132, and 133. And it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote, except as noted, in favor of the consent agenda tonight? Seeing no objection, we will record that unanimous vote, and those items are all moved on according to their recommendations as printed on the agenda. All right. That will bring us to our public hearings. We'll start with the recessed public hearings from the Alcohol License Review Committee, item number four. So I will open a public hearing on Legistar 59690, which is a new license for Global Market and Food Hall. And, sorry, refreshing and scrolling. We have no registrants on item number four, so I will close that public hearing. And President Carter, a motion?
Number four, Legistar 59690, recommend council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. That brings us to item number five, which is, and so I will open a public hearing on Legistar 59694, which is a new license for Feast. We have no registrants, so I'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item number five, Legistar 59694, recommend to council to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number five. That brings us to the report of the Plan Commission and item number six. So, I will open a public hearing on Legistar 59635, which is creating sections of the MGO to amend a plan development district at 8110 through 8134 Midtown Road and 1833 through 1859 Waldorf Boulevard. We have a number of folks who are registered as available to answer questions, none wishing to speak. I'll read through them for you. Alex Paternos of Fillmore Ave. in Eau Claire, of J Cap Real Estate in support. Rick Westling of Minneapolis, of Urban Works Architecture in support. Katie Hughes, also of Minneapolis, in support. Justin Zampardi of Verona in support, representing J Cap. Suzanne Vincent, founder of Four Year Drive, representing Verbature in support. James Stoppel of Regent Street in support. Katie Hughes, again, still in support. Let's see, I think we've got a number of duplicates here. And then Danielle Kyle Hofer of Cam's Drive in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on item number six? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, number six, Legistar 59635, recommend to council to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adopting with conditions? Seeing no objection, we will record that and move on to our regular public hearings and the report of the Alcohol License Review Committee, item number seven. So I'll open a public hearing on Legistar Item 60379, granting various license renewals with restrictions as previously approved, and including any change of corporate structure and amended conditions as set forth in the report. On item number seven, Jim Verbek, our deputy city clerk, is available to answer questions. Are there any questions for our deputy city clerk? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item number seven, 60379, recommend to council to grant, Review Committee, sorry, to grant, period, sorry.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll do so. And that will bring us to item number eight. I'll open a public hearing on Legistar 60452, which is a new license for the melting pot. We have no registrants, and so I will recess that public hearing. President Carter?
Number eight, Legistar 60452, recommend to council to re-refer to the ALRC.
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, we will record that vote, and we will come to item nine. So I'll open a public hearing on Legistar Item 60466, which is a new license for Don Beto Groceries. We have one registrant, Roberto Rojas of Ziegler Road in support, available to answer questions. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number nine, Legistar 60466, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to... Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Take us to item number 10. Open a public hearing on Legistar item 60485, which is a public hearing for a new license of the Mason Lounge. We have one registrant on number 10, Matthew Kleiser of Rosemary Ave in support, wishing to speak. Is Mr. Kleiser here with us?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if I was really needed to be available to speak as much as, yeah, I'm here in case you need to talk to me. I'm also, I think, item 52 with an entertainment license. I don't know if you need me to hang around for that, or if you had any questions.
On item 52, I think you're good. We just passed it.
Oh, I missed that.
So now it's, it can be hard to follow. Are there any questions for our registrant on this item? I'm not seeing any questions, so I think you're good, Mr. Kleiser, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 10, 60485, recommend to council to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted with conditions. And we will move to item number 11. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60625, which is a liquor license renewal for Harry's Liquor. We have no registrants. We'll close the public hearing. President Carter?
Number 11, Legistar 60625, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of granting. That will bring us to item number 12. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60626, liquor license renewal for Halong Bay. We have no registrants. So I'll close that public hearing. And President Carter?
Number 12, Legistar 60626, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll do so. Item number 13. We'll open a public hearing on Legistar 60627, liquor license renewal for World Buffet. We have no registrants. So close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 13, Legistar 60627, recommend to council with the following recommendations.
The recommendation is to grant. There's actually a missing word on the agenda.
Oh.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant, item number 13. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Takes us to item number 14. So I'll open a public hearing on Legistar 60628, liquor license renewal for Taqueria El Jalapeno. We have no registrants. I'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 14, Legistar 60628, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that will be done. Item 15, open a public hearing on Legistar 60629, a liquor license renewal for Jordan's Big Ten Pub. And we have no registrants. So I'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 15, Legistar 60629, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. Brings us to item number 16. Open a public hearing on 60630, a liquor license renewal for Frame Shift Arts Cafe. We have no registrants. I'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 16, 60630, recommend to council to grant.
I believe the motion is to grant with existing premises and conditions. This is where you need to check your consent agenda, President Carter, because these are the recommendations from the ALRC meeting of 5/28.
Okay, thank you.
Second. If the motion is there?
So moved and seconded to grant with all existing premises and conditions to carry over to the next licensing year. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will do so. Brings us to item number 17. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60631, a liquor license renewal for Gloria's Mexican Restaurant. We have no registrants. Close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 17, 60631, recommend council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. Take us to item 18. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60632, a liquor license renewal for Orient House. We have no registrants. So close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 18, 60632, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll do so. Brings us to item 19. I'll open a public hearing on 60633, liquor license renewal for Tipsy Cow. We have no registrants. So close that public hearing. President Carter?
19, 60633, recommend to council to grant.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. And take up item 20. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60634, which is a liquor license renewal for North of the Bayou. We have one registrant, Matthew Fleming of East Main in support, wishing to speak. Is Mr. Fleming with us?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. I'm speaking in support of this license, however, I'm asking that conditions four and five on the license be removed. Should also mention, I didn't formally register for item 72. That's the companion entertainment license, which I realize those conditions are there as well. Those two conditions were just placed upon the license at the ALRC meeting on May 27, at which I initially appeared, but because my client, Dale Beck, was not able to be there, the item was tabled till he got back. He was able to speak on the phone, and then when these conditions were discussed, I had no way to get back into the meeting to discuss my concerns about them. Number four, our objection is really more of a matter of principle. This was recommended to the ALRC to be put on based upon a belief that there was an incident where a bartender at this business had been intoxicated. It was later conceded to me by Assistant City Attorney Zillavy that, in fact, that was the wrong establishment, that the police report she had read was from a place called Joe Beck's, which is both nearby and also has a similar name with, you know, Dale Beck being the owner and agent of this business. So just as a matter of principle, since this was recommended based on error, I guess we would ask for that to be removed. The second one, the requirement to call the police when any criminal activity occurs on the premises. While I certainly, in principle, understand that, and, you know, my client has tried very hard to work with the police and does call the police, just the way that is worded is unfortunately very difficult, because oftentimes what constitutes a crime is not always clear at the heat of the moment. It's not always known to security. They don't investigate things. They are there to keep the peace. And I would like to commend Assistant City Attorney Zillavy. While I'm a little bit upset about a variety of procedural issues about how this all happened, I am very thankful that she's worked with me to try to get these issues addressed, and then included setting up a telephone conference with her, myself, and Captain Nelson at the East Precinct. In that discussion, Captain Nelson indicated that they had really no concerns about North of the Bayou. All of his officers, he reported, saying that the security does a very good job there. There had been some incidents early this year, and my client, Dale Beck, actually reached out, took the initiative to reach out to the police department, set up a meeting back in February to try to just talk to the police, let them know some changes they were making to address that situation. And while they didn't get a great deal of time due to COVID-19 to really test the waters on how well those changes were really going to affect issues there, what little time they had, about a month and a half, really seemed to show progress. But Captain Nelson also agreed with my concern that strictly speaking, you know, for instance, a little fight breaks out, even if somebody like throws a punch, that could technically be a crime, but if it is broken up and people leave, you know, there's all kinds of little situations where, frankly, the police probably wouldn't respond and don't even want to be called. And so given that he expressed no concern about what was happening and the way the security was operating at this, on these premises, he was comfortable simply removing that restriction as well. And we agreed as a compromise that we would agree that we would come back to the ALRC in about six months just for review, you know, just to see how things have gone now that things are reopening and so forth. So, but there were some very serious questions I had about how, as a practical matter, to implement that call the police when any criminal activity occurs and what that's going to mean for how, you know, they're actually going to function and whether the police really want that. So based on the fact that both of these conditions were really put on based upon either faulty or incomplete information, I would ask the council to approve the license with all of the conditions except for numbers four and five. And I guess I would also ask that that be the same for the entertainment license, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to let the council know, Attorney Zillavy is with us tonight. If you have questions for her, but item 72 was taken up on the consent agenda and passed. So if you wish to address that, you'd need to ask for reconsideration. Alder, so we, sorry, properly, we need to start with questions for the registrant. Alder Lemmer, is it a question? Hold on, Alder Lemmer.
I have questions for Attorney Zillavy. Thank you, sorry.
That's all right. I'm going to leave you unmuted because I don't see any other hands. So we will close, you know what, just in case, I'm going to recess that public hearing, and we will turn to questions for staff. Attorney Zillavy, I'm inviting you to unmute yourself. Alder Lemmer, go ahead.
Thank you. I was, I would just like Attorney Zillavy to speak to what he said about conditions four and five. I've not been informed of Captain Nelson and Attorney Zillavy's, like, comfort with removing those, so I would like to hear what she has to say.
I agree with everything that Attorney Fleming just stated to the council. And unfortunately, had we been able to have a back and forth at the ALRC, the issues would have been resolved there, but Attorney Fleming was not able to get back into the discussion at the ALRC meeting. But I, as he said, the captain who was at the meeting misread a police report and thought that the owner had been consuming alcohol while on duty, and that's why that condition was suggested. And that turned out to not be the case. And after our discussion with Captain Nelson, I am comfortable with removing conditions four and five from the license.
Okay, thank you.
Alder, do you have additional questions?
I don't. I would like to put forward removing those conditions four and five.
Right. So we'll, I'll turn to you when it's time for a motion, Alder. Are there any additional questions for Attorney Zillavy or other staff? All right. Seeing none, thank you, attorney. All right. So with your permission, President Carter, I'll turn to Alder Lemmer for a motion.
Sure.
Alder Lemmer?
Move adoption with removing conditions four and five.
President Carter, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt without conditions four and five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. And I'll just note for the registrant and Alder Lemmer that you might have a conversation about item 72 with staff, since I believe that those same conditions were just passed on that item. So Alder Lemmer, you might want to clean that up in a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that will bring us to item number 21. And I will open a public hearing on Legistar 60635, which is a liquor license renewal for Joe Beck's Bar. And we have no registrants, so I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 21, 60635, recommend to council to grant with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant with conditions.
It's been moved and seconded. Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had sought recognition to make a motion relating to item 72. I'm comfortable with you calling me at the conclusion of the public hearings for that.
So let's dispense with item number 21, and I'll come right back to you, Alder.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So item number 21 has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing no objection, we will do so. And then Alder Revere on a point?
Thank you again, Mayor. At this, at this point, I would ask that the council move a reconsideration of our previous action on Agenda item number 72, 18-plus center for performing arts license renewal for groups of Dane County doing businesses north of the Bayou.
Alder Lemmer?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reconsider item number 72. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of reconsideration? Seeing none, we will do so. And that brings item 72 before us. Alder Lemmer, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah. Hold on one second. Okay. I would like to move recommending council to grant with conditions four and five removed.
Alder Revere?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant item 72, removing conditions four and five. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will do so. Thank you both. And that will take us to item number 22. Open a public hearing on Legistar 60636, a liquor license renewal for Bennett's Meadowwood Country Club. We have no registrants. So I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 22, Legistar 60636, recommend to council to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. That will bring us to item number 23. Open a public hearing on 60637, liquor license renewal for Camp Triple Lindy. We have no registrants, so I will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item number 23, Legisdar 60637, grant with all existing premises and condition to carry over to the next licensing year.
Second to grant with all the existing premises and conditions.
Moved and seconded to grant, et cetera. Are there, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 24, I will open a public hearing on 60638, a liquor license renewal for AMC. We have no registrants. We'll close a public hearing. President Carter?
Item number 24, Legisdar 60638, recommend to grant with all existing premises and condition to carry over to next licensing year.
Second to grant with all the existing premises and conditions to carry over to the next license year.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 25, we'll open a public hearing on Legisdar 60640, liquor license renewal for Farm Tavern. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 25, Legisdar 60640, recommend to grant with conditions, conditions, the licensing shall appear before ALRC at the regular November meeting.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 26, open a public hearing on Legisdar 60642, a liquor license renewal for Forage Kitchen. We have no registrants, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 26, Legisdar 60642, recommend to grant with all existing premises and conditions to carry over to next licensing year.
Second to grant with all the existing premises and condition to carry over to next license year.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 27, we will open a public hearing on 60643, a liquor license renewal for Howard Johnson Plaza. We have no registrants. And so, we'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 27, Legisdar 60643, recommend action, place on file without prejudice.
Second to place on file without prejudice.
Moved and seconded to place on file. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that is placed on file. Item number 28, we will open a public hearing on 60644, a liquor license renewal for Visions Nightclub. We have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 28, 60644, recommendation to grant with conditions, conditions, there will be no private booths on the licensed premises.
Second to grant with condition.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 29, we will open a public hearing on 60645, liquor license renewal for Doubletree Hotel Madison. We have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Item 29, 60645, recommend to grant.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 30, we'll open a public hearing on 60651, an adult entertainment license renewal for Bennett's Meadowwood Country Club. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 30, Legisdar 60651, recommend to council to grant with conditions.
Second to grant with conditions.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none. Item, we are on to the report of the Board of the Public Works. So, item number 31, we'll open a public hearing on Legisdar 60209, which is discontinuing and vacating a remaining portion of the Public Street right-of-way, Garden Street. And we will, so that public hearing is open. We have registrants, Melissa Huggins of Johnson Street, and representing SSM Health in support and available to answer questions, and Kyle Prochaska from the Belt Line, also representing SSM Health in support and available to answer questions. Are there any questions for either of our registrants? Seeing no questions, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, number 31, 60209, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. Item number 32, we'll open a public hearing on Legisdar 60473, which is approving plans, specs, et cetera, for East Gorham Street Assessment District. We have two registrants, Richard Thellin of Gorham Street in opposition, available to answer questions, and Matt Frost, also of Gorham Street in opposition and available to answer questions. Are there any questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, number 32, 60473, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we will do so. And item number 33, we'll open a public hearing on Legisdar 60522, which is approving the second revised schedule of assessments for Dairy Drive Assessment District. We have one registrant, Tyler Marks of Broadway, in support, available to answer questions. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Number 33, Legisdar 60522, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none. That brings us to the end of our public hearings, and I'd like to see if there's any objection on the body to returning to item number two and allowing our additional registrant who had technical issues to speak on that item. If you do object, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing no objection, we have a registration from Tyson Vitale of Outreach Incorporated in support wishing to speak. Is Mr. Vitale with us?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hey, I won't waste your guys' time. Did this pass unanimously, is that correct?
It did.
Okay, well, thank you all. On behalf of the Board of Outreach, we supported it. I won't do the speech that we came up with, because you guys pass it unanimously, and I know you guys, I'll be, I'll save you guys some time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vitale. All right, so that dispenses with that item. And I believe that brings us to item number 36, which is Legisdar 60680, reaffirming the City of Madison's commitment to supporting pollinator health. President Carter?
Item 36, 60680, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded, Alder Lemmer?
Thank you. I, I want to thank District Three resident Annette Lang.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Alder Lemmer. We do have registrants on this item, so we should properly take them up first. My apologies, I'm a little bit behind on the registration report here. So, just a moment while that refreshes. So, we have a registration from Annette Lang of Knightford Road in support, not wishing to speak. So, I just wanted to make sure that we let everyone know that she's in support, and then go ahead, Alder Lemmer.
Okay, thank you. So, I wanted to thank her. She had inquired with me a couple of weeks ago. She was surprised that Madison wasn't doing a no-mo may. So, I looked into it, and I found that while it's technically allowed under our current ordinances, there's some additional hurdles to being able to do that. So, instead, we wanted to highlight the ways that Madisonians can support pollinators in Madison's history of coming up with ways to support our pollinators, especially in this time of accelerated climate change. So, I could read the resolution into the record, if that's all right?
As you wish, Alder.
Thank you. Whereas in 2017, the City of Madison became a certified B-City per the requirements outlined in B-City USA. And whereas, pollinator-friendly communities can benefit local and regional economies through healthier ecosystems, increased vegetable and fruit crop yields, and increased demand for pollinator-friendly plant materials from local nurseries and growers. And whereas, the loss of pollinators, including honeybees, native bees, bats, birds, and butterflies across the country, have been severe over the past few decades. And whereas, bees and other pollinators have experienced population declines due to a combination of habitat loss, use of pesticides, and the spread of pests and diseases. And whereas, the rusty patched fumblebee, a resident species at Ulbruck Gardens, and once commonly seen in 28 states, including Wisconsin, as recently as the 1990s, has become the first fumblebee species to be listed as endangered under federal law. And whereas, in 2014, the Madison Common Council passed RES 1400, directing the Madison Food Policy Council to initiate a Pollinator Protection Task Force to study pollinator health and make recommendations on how the city can support pollinators. And whereas, in 2017, the Madison Common Council accepted the report of the Pollinator Protection Task Force as a guiding document for the City of Madison to address the issue of pollinator decline and directing the Madison Food Policy Council, with assistance of city staff, to implement the recommendations. And whereas, in order to enhance understanding among local government staff and the public about the vital role that pollinators play and what each of us can do to sustain them, Madison chooses to support and encourage pollinator habitat creation and enhancement on both public and private land. And whereas, the North American monarch population has declined by more than 90% in the past two decades. And whereas, migration route of the eastern population includes the Great Lakes region, and many cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. And whereas, in 2017, the Madison Common Council authorized the City of Madison to take the mayor's monarch pledge. And whereas, Ulbruck Botanical Gardens has been certified as a colossal monarch way station by Monarch Watch. And whereas, Madison General Ordinance 27.05 permits residents to plant natural landscapes in their yards, which include pollinator or rain gardens. And whereas, many residents of the City of Madison are also creating habitat for monarchs and other pollinators on private property. And whereas, the City of Madison has a goal of 1,000 rain gardens, with a current count of 624 registered gardens, and invites residents to participate. And whereas, a rain garden, particularly one with native plants, can attract beneficial birds, hummingbirds, butterflies, and bees. Monarch butterflies can thrive when rain gardens have milkweed and blazing stair species. Birds can eat the native plant seeds during the fall and winter. Be it resolved that the City of Madison reaffirms its commitment to supporting pollinator health, and be it finally resolved that the City of Madison thanks those residents who have already installed rain or pollinator gardens, and encourages all residents who are able to do so, to plant pollinator rain gardens on their property.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any discussion? Vice President Abbas?
All right, here we go. Can you please have me as a co-sponsor?
Will be done. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, that has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will record a unanimous vote in favor. Thank you, Alder Lemmer. And I do just want to note, at this time, so we're, we're headed for item 80, but we had a number of late registrants, I believe after we adopted the consent agenda on items that were on the consent agenda. And so, just for your benefit, Alders, I'll note these items, and if you're interested in reconsideration on any of these, let me know. So, on item number 76, which is the adult entertainment license renewal for Visions, we have two registrants in opposition, not wishing to speak. For item number seven, excuse me, 77, the separated 21-plus entertainment license renewal for Visions, same two registrants in opposition, not wishing to speak. And item number 78, the change of license premise for Visions, same two residents in opposition, not wishing to speak. Just for the completeness of the record, I wanted to make sure that we noted that those folks had registered on those items. Alder Foster?
Mayor, could you read the names of the registrants?
Absolutely. So, we have Brian Doty of Westport Road, again, in opposition, not wishing to speak on all three of those items. And Babette Rose of Ridgeway Ave, in opposition, not wishing to speak on all three of those items. Thank you, Alder. Any other questions or discussion on those items? All right, then we will move to item number 80, which is Legisdar 60351, repealing and recreating Chapter 37, the public stormwater system, including erosion control of the Madison general ordinances. We have several registrants on this item. And we'll start with Bill Connors of West Main, neither supporting nor opposing, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison, wishing to speak. Mr. Connors?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Very good. So, yes, my name is Bill Connors. I'm the Executive Director of Smart Growth Greater Madison. Smart Growth represents businesses that are involved in real estate development in the greater Madison area. That includes developers, property managers, general contractors, architects, engineering firms, and, and other kinds of companies involved in that area of business. Smart Growth Greater Madison supports wide-ranging actions to address lake flooding and flash flooding in Madison. The effort to do so should extend well outside of Madison and include efforts to slow runoff from rural areas north of Lake Mendota into the lake. That's the start of kind of the upper end of the system. It would also help improve water quality in the lakes, which is the Yehara Clean Compact is working on. The dredging of the Yehara River south of Lake Monona, and, and we are thankful to see that that has started. And also crucial to the effort are remedial stormwater infrastructure projects in flood-prone areas of Madison. These efforts would have near-term positive impacts on flooding, while the proposed ordinance in the near term isn't going to have any impact on flooding. The vast majority of the provisions in the ordinance apply only to new greenfield development in the future. And city staff has candidly admitted, the provisions that apply to redevelopment won't have a meaningful impact until decades from now. The redevelopment provisions in particular will hit hardest on the small projects by small developers, because their buildings have smaller number of units, and to spread the additional cost of this ordinance across. And so, the projects they're most likely to be involved on are missing middle projects, smaller buildings. smaller buildings that are, that your staff will talk about, there's not enough of them being developed in the city. The bigger developers with their bigger projects, bigger buildings are a little bit are able to handle these additional costs because their buildings have so many more units. Also, the impact of the ordinance and the cost, and Bradley Hutter, our president, is going to follow after me and talk about these things, about how they work, but the added cost will cause some projects not to happen, not all projects, but some projects not to happen. And the result of that is in coming years, there will be smaller increases in the city's levy limit, which will make future budgets that much harder. I mean, we already, I know you're already talking about how challenging the upcoming budgets are going to be, but if there's a slowdown in new development, that'll make it that much more challenging. As I mentioned, Bradley Hutter will be talking about the impacts of the cost and how that works, but I want to suggest to you all that regardless of what you do with this ordinance tonight, whether you vote for it and implement it immediately, or pause to do some cost-benefit analysis on it, I urge you to form a work group of Alder persons and city staff and the development community to find ways to reduce the cost of development, because that will help offset added costs of things like this ordinance and bird glass and electric vehicle charging ordinance.
Pardon me, Mr. Speaker, your time is up. Your three minutes are up.
All right, if I, may I wrap up in one more sentence?
One more sentence.
One more sentence. So for example, if we can find small ways to reduce, small amounts of time in the development process here, there, and in several places, the cumulative impact of those time savings will actually have a substantial cost saving. So I urge you to do that regardless of what you do with this ordinance tonight. And I appreciate the time to speak with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. We'll move next to Bradley Hutter of the Beltline Highway, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison, neither supporting nor opposing and wishing to speak. Mr. Hutter?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you, Your Honor, Mayor, and City Council President Sherry from Fabulous 14, thought in our district. I would, I'd like to just talk about, take up where Bill left off and talk about the two things that most, that we think almost necessarily will happen right away up on the implementation of this ordinance. First is that if it is implemented without some sort of delay or grandfathering clause, there's probably quite a few projects that have been under design and under development for months and possibly some even years, because these projects, the larger ones, of course, take quite a long time to design for a number of different reasons, they would have to go back and redesign, they would have to go back and recalibrate, and they could, it could significantly impact whether they, whether they happen. We do support longstanding, you know, stormwater improvements across the system and with regulations and so forth. I think everyone wants cleaner lakes and better water and better flood control and so forth. Certainly, we support that 100%. So if it's, but if it's implemented immediately, that could have a tremendous impact on existing projects underway, and it might cause some of those projects not to happen or not to happen as well as they should have. And the impact coming out of the COVID pandemic shutdown and after what's been happening here in Madison could just be a kind of a snowballing effect. And so I want everyone to think about possibly implementing this now, but withholding its, or passing it tonight if that happens, but withholding its implementation for 12 months or 18 months to put together that work group that Bill discussed, as well as allow current projects in the pipeline to get completed and keep that momentum going for Madison when we really desperately need to move that levy limit and to keep projects happening and keep housing costs as low as possible. The second thing that I want to discuss is just the impact of the additional costs, as Bill started talking about. The additional cost increases of sales and rents of new and existing housing in Madison because developers of new subdivisions and apartment buildings will be required by the banks, not on their own, but by the banks to charge higher prices in rents to pay for the increased cost of the new requirements, because the banks require project costs to be passed through, and the banks require pro formas that show that the rents that are going to be charged will pay for the overall project cost. So as the overall project costs go up, obviously, the rents required to be promised to the banks that will be, that will pay them back go up in a direct ratio. To the extent that we can all work together with that work group in order to address those costs, address timing, we all want to create more affordable housing in Madison. Higher rents don't necessarily, in many cases, don't at all mean higher profits for developers. In many cases, they actually mean lower profits for developers. The more people that can access the developments that we provide in the city, the more opportunities development has, and the more opportunities that the people of the city have with more affordable housing overall. So it really benefits everyone. So my, I'll wrap up simply by saying that we support the thrust of the ordinance, the intention of the ordinance. Please consider delayed implementation to allow current projects to proceed in that pipeline.
Mr. Hutter, your time's up.
May I just have one sentence to finish?
Just wrap up that sentence, please.
You got it. So the delayed implementation of the projects in that pipeline, and also work with us in a work group during, hopefully, that 12th to 18th month delay in order to assess the financial impact and how we might be able to address that to provide more affordable housing in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutter. Our next speaker is Carol Terrell of Red Maple Trail in support, representing the League of Women Voters of Dane County, and available to answer questions. Are there any questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none. President Carter, then, a motion. Item 80, Legis Ar 60351, recommend to council to adopt. And Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there any questions for staff? Alder Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure who can answer this. It might, planning staff maybe to start? I'm not sure. There was reference to redesign, large amounts of redesign that would be required if this were to be implemented right away. And my impression as a member of Plan Commission is that all of the projects in the pipeline are told about these new requirements, likely coming up in the near future, and even what the schedule was of when they are likely to be implemented. So I just kind of wanted to double check to confirm that, that staff has been telling applicants and people that start discussing larger projects, let's say, about this for quite a while, has been my impression.
Alder, I'm going to ask Greg Fries to answer your question. Greg, you should be unmuted.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So we have been, to answer your question, Alder, we have been at the DAT and SuperDAT, the Development Assistance Team. We have been telling developers about these things coming down the road for better than a year now, to try and, try and be transparent and forewarn them that, you know, depending, because a lot of times when they come to DAT, these projects are six, eight, even a year out from a submittal. So I think, and also, we've been doing outreach for quite some time. So I don't know that that is as big a concern as it might be if we had just gone through the public process, you know, for the last month.
Thanks, that answers my question.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas?
Thank you. I have one question for Bill from Smart Growth. If this, if you allow me, I would like to ask him a question.
If we still have him, we, ask our tech facilitators if we can get Mr. Connors back in?
I can see Bradley is also, the president is also there. Oh, Bill is there, okay. Yeah, so my, Bill, my question is, I know you mentioned about the cost and how it would impact the cost of the project. Have you ever did some analysis or shared some analysis with the city staff about the cost analysis, like how much it will cost for, let's say, 250,000 square feet project, and how much that cost will increase with this stormwater, let's say, green roof or blue roof? Have you ever checked on the overall cost of the project? How much it changed, excuse me, how much it changed?
Yeah, so we have provided engineering, city engineering staff with some examples of costs. So for example, you know, on a new subdivision, 100-acre subdivision, one calculation, one of our engineering firms did, was that in some situations, it could eliminate four lots from the, from the development, which will have an economic impact that will have to be made up in some regard. Let's see, I'm trying to find some other examples. Where do we have here? You know, I'll give you one example that wasn't of the, of the new proposal, but Greg Shemansky, who did the infill and redevelopment project near the intersection of Commercial Avenue and McCormick Avenue, that I think is in your district, Alder Abbas, was recently approved. When he first was outlining that project to his engineers and got an estimate of what it would cost to do, to comply with the existing stormwater requirements, he got an estimate of it would cost $375,000 on a $4 million project. That's the existing ordinances. So he actually downsized that project from four to three buildings in order to get that cost down. And he said, look, if this, if this ordinance, this new ordinance were in effect, when he was trying to do that project, he wouldn't have gone forward with that project.
And did you also, I know there's several technology and techniques you can do from stormwater. I also saw the design of West Gate Mall and how they are using part of their land for stormwater management. Did you also look for a cost point of view regarding the blue roof, what the Jim Doyle scare project is also using? Most probably, they might use blue roof. Have you checked on that angle?
I don't have a cost estimate on blue roof versus green roof. I was gonna say, I have another estimate of a cost, an example where one of our member contractors was asked to bid on a, on a three, just a small commercial building with a really dense green roof, you know, that would have the kind of the maximum impact, and that would have added $15 per square foot to the bid price, or an additional $54,000 to a small commercial building. And if you went the cistern route as opposed to the dense green roof route, that would be about an extra $100,000. So, you know, in some of the, your engineering staff, you can, you can ask Greg Fries, and they'll give you examples of ones where, you know, a new subdivision where it didn't really add any cost. So it's really very, very site-specific about how much additional cost it's going to add. So in some projects, it's going to add very little cost, and they'll just sail right along. Other projects, it could be, you know, the last bit of cost that breaks the camel's back and the project doesn't go forward because the finances just don't look feasible. It's going to be a really unpredictable kind of thing. And so that's why I was suggesting, like, it would be great if we could have a working group to just kind of across the board, reduce development costs, and that'll, that'll benefit all these projects and help reduce rents and housing prices sort of across the border, prevent them from going up as fast is more, a better way to say it.
Appreciate the answer, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman, a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had some questions for Greg Fries.
All right, go ahead.
Greg, could you talk a little about the public process that went into this stormwater ordinance change?
So actually, I'm going to ask Janet Schmidt is also on tonight. That one is her, she's kind of led the outreach for this. If you could unmute her, I think she's on somewhere.
Sure, I can speak to that. So we had, I would say, pretty robust public engagement process. We had several, what Greg mentioned before, we've talked to developers or consultants ahead of time when they came to, they routinely come and meet with us to ask about stormwater, stormwater questions. So we've, we've kind of been giving them a heads up on this for well over a year. As far as the engagement, we've had several PIMs. We, we had three of them. We've recorded those. We've went to the Plan Commission and also did an overview with the Common Council Executive Committee. And then we were invited to several stakeholder groups to participate in that and giving presentations for those people as well. In addition, we've talked to Dane County, and we've also met with other area municipalities. So I, and we had, we had open, on our website, we had an open comment period as well, so we tried to get as much feedback as we could before we made any final decisions on what we're doing. So I really do feel like we tried to get as much input we could, we could on this. And then we made our modifications to what we thought was important.
I appreciate that. One of the speakers mentioned that we should be including areas outside of Madison. Janet, you mentioned that a little bit. Obviously, we don't have control of what goes on outside of Madison. We're here to create ordinances related to Madison. But you said that, Janet, you had spoken to some other municipalities in the county?
Yeah, and I'll start, and maybe Greg can jump in, but we've, we're a part of the Mam Swap Group, which is our MS4 EPA permit group, and we've done presentations to those folks. And that's a, that's a group of 21 different entities that are part of our EPA permit. So they've been, you know, they've seen what we're proposing. We've also had conversations with Dane County, and in particular, we talked to City Middleton as well, just to let them know what's going on. So it might not have hit all the municipalities in the area, but we have, we have talked to quite a few.
And if I could just add briefly, we, the last presentation we did right before the world kind of closed was to CARPSY. And CARPSY did a letter of, a resolution of support for us and recommends adoption countywide. So, and we would certainly support that, in fact, and many, one of the comments we took from developers was this should be implemented countywide. So not so much that they objected to the ordinance, but they objected to it only being effective in Madison.
And Greg, if I remember correctly, you presented to the Dane County Cities and Villages Association as well, didn't you?
I believe we did, yes. Yep.
And there were, there was conversation there with other municipalities.
Thank you. The, go ahead.
We're also going, I think, next week, we have another presentation to the Middleton Water Resources Board next Wednesday, I think.
Greg, somebody had mentioned that, well, one of the speakers mentioned that this won't have an impact for decades from now. Could you talk a little about that?
Yeah, I made that comment, and I made that comment, I think, at the Plan Commission briefing presentation that we gave. And really what I was referring to, and so the redevelopment, I think, as everybody probably on this call knows, redevelopment currently has, if you go from a parking lot to a rooftop, you have essentially no stormwater requirements at all, none, okay? And once upon a time, probably almost 10 years ago now, I made a pitch when we redid MGO 27, or 28, which is the zoning code, right? I went to that committee that was rewriting that, and I made a pitch, and I said, what the best thing you guys could do would be to give an incentive in the zoning code to put in green roofs. And it was, it was, it was a pitch, it wasn't, for a lot of really good reasons, it wasn't done. But if it had been done, right? And all the redevelopment you had seen down the East Wash corridor over the last decade and a half, right? Had had green roofs, you would see a difference now. So what I'm saying, when I said that, what I really meant was, yeah, you got to reach critical mass. And we missed a bit of an opportunity here, you know, because a lot of East Wash redeveloped. But we have more opportunities. You got to start, right? And, you know, one building doesn't make a difference, but 20 does, right? In a limited watershed. So that's kind of what I was getting at.
I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders wishing to ask questions of staff. So then, is there any discussion? Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the engineering staff for all the work they put into this. I'll be honest, I wish this was even tougher, but appreciate the approach they took and tried to be pragmatic about it. As everybody knows, the August 20th, 2018 floods that hit the west side caused substantial damage. And the reaction by engineering to figure out how we can avoid stuff like that in the future is greatly appreciated. Stuff like this matters. The city obviously is investing millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure improvements. We're investing a ton of money in watershed studies to figure out what we can do. But it's incredibly important for the development community as well to do efforts. The idea of delaying this for, you know, any amount of time is troubling to me, that idea. You can't rebuild a building once it's built. You can't go back and ask somebody to add stormwater mitigation once it's built. And so I think it's incredibly important we get this on the books. People have had a lot of warning. You know, somebody had talked about cost. I think, you know, there are plenty of people in my district and the surrounding districts, residents, that experienced very high costs when the flooding happened. And I think, you know, these costs, if the developers aren't taking it on or at least sharing some of that burden, they're going, it's going to be passed on to the residents. And also continue to make Madison's investment, which is already incredibly high and continues to increase in stormwater mitigation high. You know, I think a speaker had mentioned that it's very site-specific. Yeah, that makes sense. If there are sites that flood easily, sure, it makes sense that it'll probably cost a lot more to do mitigation there. I think this is incredibly important. Climate change obviously is real. We continue to see a lot of problems. I think it's really important that we make the step to go forward and we continue to look at this going forward to see if we can strengthen this. I know staff is committed to reexamining this on a regular basis and going through a good process to make sure that we're mitigating climate change as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to largely just echo Alder Furman's comments. Staff did a really great work with this. I also, you know, wish we could have gone even further and support continued work to strengthen these as we go forward. I also do hope, I sit on CARPSY and there's very strong interest and support there to just to spread these practices beyond the city of Madison. So I'm hopeful that we do set an example here and that others will follow suit. And I just wanted to say, I was a little struck with one of the comments that, you know, this won't have an immediate effect. This will only have an effect in the future. And I think that, to me, is really just an argument of why this is so critical. We have to get beyond just thinking about what's going to happen next year and really start dealing with some of the longer-term impacts of our development. So again, thank you to staff and a strong support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Prestigiacomo.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I'll just be really brief. I thank you to everyone that, you know, put so much work into this over the years, over the year that you, you know, worked on it. I thought I'd just like briefly talk about costs. And I'm sure this is going to be a question that we're going to run into every step of the way we work on climate mitigation. Cost is inevitable. Unfortunately, it's sacrifice that we're going to be paying for decades of inaction. And, you know, I'm supporting this ordinance because without it, we're going to be paying much more in the future. And, you know, like Alder Foster said, I was a little taken aback by, you know, seeing this doesn't have an impact until a few decades. And, you know, that's pretty, in my life, that's, I'm going to be living in Madison. That's, you know, it's just an unfortunate situation to be in where we know we're thinking only years ahead when we have, you know, more than seven generations to think ahead. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will do so. And that will bring us to item 132. And, sorry, let me just get there. Item 132 is Legis 60762, approving the mayor's declaration that a state of emergency exists for the city of Madison. And we have a number of registrants starting with Benjamin Olnek Brown of Spate Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Gregory Golembiak of Jennifer Street. Mr. Olnek Brown?
I do not see him in the attendee list.
All right. Then how about Mr. Golembiak in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Tyson Vitale? Mr. Golembiak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Hello. It's impossible to govern without the consent of the governed. What you've lost here is legitimacy. With that, you lose social control. The curfew and some of the actions of Madison police are continuing to erode that legitimacy. David Cooper knew how to provide that. He would not draw a line between himself and protesters. Madison has forgotten those lessons. The IHOP Committee report speaks about procedural justice that's needed here, not Robocop firing tear gas randomly at people. To quote from a Vox article, "What we know is curfews increase opportunities for police interaction and police violence over time." Andrea Ritchie, a criminal justice researcher at the Bernard Center for Research on Women, stated, "Ritchie is deeply skeptical of curfews, which put more police in the street and empower them to behave repressively in tense situations as an effective policing mechanism when animosity toward police is fueling the protests in the first place." Quote, "If the source of uprising and resistance is police brutality, then imposing a curfew that creates more opportunities for police brutality is definitely not the answer," she said. In an article in Quartz entitled, "And Still Cities in America Are Embracing the Worst Idea to Come Out of Ferguson", it states, quote, "The toxicity of curfews in the St. Louis suburb sparked additional and perhaps retaliatory unrest. The governor's decision to restrict the movement of Ferguson's mostly black population exacerbated long simmering anger from law enforcement, royal and community leaders, and extended confrontation with residents. Establishing this curfew was only one of many missteps by a clearly overwhelmed police department," end quote. Curfews don't deter, they inflame. As an article The Atlantic noted of the current riots, rebellion has always been used to defend liberty. There's an underlying problem. There are two Madisons, with police often serving to enforce the advantages and privileges of the one Madison over the other. The racial disparities in arrest rates here are some of the highest in the nation. That can't continue. You can't continue to attempt to govern without the consent of the governed. You have to reestablish a social contract, maneuvers to gain dominance, or telling everyone to, quote, "go home", as with tear gas and curfews, will fail. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Jennifer Bastian. Mr. Vitale, go ahead.
So I don't have any prepared remarks. I am really upset. And so I'm just going to preface that normally I'd have something more formal here, but I'm just speaking from the cough. And the first thing I have to say is, Mayor, how dare you? I voted for you. And you doing this and installing a curfew and advocating for more policing in our community, I am just beyond upset with you right now. And I implore each and every one of you Alders to vote against extending this curfew. More policing is not the answer. How dare you? I am so angry right now. I am seriously upset. I expected better, Satya, and I'm serious. I really, I don't know why you did this. You should have not. And I implore each and every one of you Alders to vote against extending a curfew. That is not the answer. That gives more authority to the police. During this time, we're going to give more authority to the police? We're going to give more power to the police? Are you kidding me? How dare you? Do not vote to extend this curfew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Next is Jennifer Bastian of Lakeside Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Nicole Anderson.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bastian. I am here today as a Madison resident, a mother, and a small business owner. I'm here to oppose the extension of the state of emergency and demand that the mayor and the city end the curfew and cease the brutalization of black youth. The idealistic view of peaceful protest and the discomfort of violent disruption are not set opposite each other in a binary. The language used to express hundreds of years of oppression at the hands of a government wielding systemic white supremacy is not going to be clean, easy to digest, and used as a soundbite for political posturing. The structure of white supremacy must be dismantled before any kindness can be asked of our black community members. Where was this curfew and a show of military force when white right-wing militia members came into the Capitol with assault weapons? When black and brown youth have repeatedly been the subject of police brutality in and outside of schools? End of this curfew now, end it. We know that the militarization of police always escalates. It does not de-escalate violence. You have the opportunity to listen to black leaders, to hear their demands and to change direction. Take this generous gift they are giving you right now and end the curfew. Divest from the police, begin community control of the police, get cops out of schools, free all incarcerated peoples at risk for COVID-19, create a budget that sees humanity rather than holding property over the value of black lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicole Anderson of Clements Avenue in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Katka Showers Curtis.
There is no Nicole in the attendee list.
All right. Then Katka Showers Curtis of Harvey Street in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Nathan Roykemauer.
There is no Katia either.
All right, how about Nathan?
Yes.
All right, Nathan Roykemauer from Arena, Wisconsin, in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Amelia Roykemauer.
Hello, council. Yes, this is Nathan Roykemauer. I'm a former, longtime Madison resident where I still work and a police accountability activist in Madison since 2012, when MPD Officer Steve Heinfman shot and killed my unarmed friend Paul Heenan in front of my apartment on South Baldwin Street. I'm also a co-founder of the Community Response Team. I oppose the extension of the curfew because it is a clear invitation to MPD to engage protesters voicing their righteous rage at the ongoing killing of black people at the hands of police, with only the latest being George Floyd in Minneapolis and Breonna Taylor and David McAteen in Louisville, Kentucky. There's much research supporting the observation that curfews increase the opportunities for police interaction and police violence towards the public. Once you mix the tension already in the streets with a police force that believes it has been given a blind check to engage protesters in violation of the curfew en masse, you get the scenes we saw in Madison over the past few days. You get youth gassed, you get youth injured, and you get youth traumatized, many of them black and brown youth already traumatized at the hands of our police. When you couple this decision with the words of support expressed by you, the mayor, and others for the actions of the protesters, the dissidence is deafening. How can you say black lives matter and support the actions of the protesters while at the same time deliberately creating explosive conditions for violent conflict in the form of these curfew extensions? Only days ago, the Capitol Square was enveloped in tear gas and the reports from the scene that I heard and saw suggested it was police choosing to engage after the curfews began because they wanted to clear people out that were otherwise peaceful and nonviolent. Once the tear gas started, the understandable retaliation started and then it was chaos. The city should open its arms as wide as it can to accommodate the deathless frustration and rage and sadness at how black folks have been treated by police, including the MPD killing of Tony Robinson, whose killer remains employed by MPD to this day. Please reconsider this decision and rescind the order to extend the state of emergency and the curfew. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia Roykemauer, also of Arena, Wisconsin, in opposition wishing to speak, to be followed by Russell Peets. Amelia?
Hi, everybody. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello? Okay. I'm going to read something to you real quick. The mask is off, says a post someone on Facebook. Austin police have killed a young man by shooting him in the head with birdshot rounds wrapped in cloth and continue to shoot the medics carrying his body. They shot a known pregnant woman in the stomach, then stormed and abducted her from the medic tent. They maced young children during a peaceful protest. Detroit police have brutally beaten tear gas and arrested peaceful protesters. A curfew is set from 8 to 5. Rockford police dragged people from their cars and beat them last night. Minneapolis police shot at people filming them with their own balconies, from their own balconies. An NYPD officer called a woman "effing bitch" and threw her on the ground. She went into a seizure and had to go to an emergency room. Then more New York cops rammed into crowds and protesters with their cars. An Atlantic couple last night had their tires slashed, windows broken, and were dragged out of their cars and tased. Chicago police announced a curfew and then raised the bridges out of downtown. Demonstrators were trapped and at utter mercy of the CPD roundups. A police supervisor ordered on the radio, "Gas them all." Over 1,000 people have been arrested. So I, everywhere journalists have been indiscriminately targeted and arrested. Madison scene last night, when I was watching people's videos the night before, Tyson's video, JT's video, looked like something that I would see happening in another country that was, had military invasion on the ground. And you had 30 soldiers up against four or five people. And I know things were broken. And I know maybe someone bounced something off the helmet of a police officer. But you cannot say that you want change if you are not willing to go through the agonizing risk of making the hard decision of demilitarizing the police in circumstances like this. You can't say it. You can't cosponsor something like this. And I don't care what your identity is. You cannot say you support helping people from being harmed from the police, stopping the police from harming people, specifically black people, and support a measure to increase the militarization of the police, knowing, and as Michael Scott said, who's an expert on use of force and worked with Herman Goldstein at the university on problem-oriented policing, that when you increase the militarization, it only causes escalation, not de-escalation, okay? But I understand why you're doing it. Because the police are a strong lobby and the businesses are a strong lobby and the Chamber of Commerce, who you let help you write the public policy, the public health policy for your city this last week, is a strong lobby. Don't talk about caring about these kids and then silence 1,000 people who wrote you today and yesterday to increase, to have immediate oversight of the police and the implementation of the recommendations. Temporary oversight until the permanent oversight is there. To create division over that is unethical. And to not let people vote and be heard, President Carter, is one of the dirtiest things I've seen since working for safe policing for our most vulnerable people in Madison. And yes, I am a white woman, that's my identity. And sometimes I am blind because of that. I don't know what I'm doing and I own it. But sometimes you're wrong. That happens on occasion.
Your time is up, Amelia.
And you couldn't be more wrong with what you did tonight. Please vote no on extending the curfew. It is racist, it is inhumane, and unethical.
Thank you. Russell Peets of West Washington Ave in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Colin, to be followed by Will Gruber. Mr. Peets?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only thing I have in common with the previous registrants is that I am also extremely upset, which I'm sure you and most of the council are too, of what's been happening. But I have lived downtown for 25 years. And I'm here with my kids now. And if, to hear a previous speaker describe it as a few broken things, walk downtown, go walk on State Street, talk to the business owners like I have. The protesters shut down The protesters shut down the Beltline today peacefully. There was no violence. They shut down John Nolan Drive yesterday peacefully. There was no violence. The marches that started Saturday at noon here in Madison were so peaceful, and I went down at 5:00 on my bike down to State Street and watched as things unraveled Saturday evening. I apologize. If the, anyone watching with open eyes the last few days here in Madison, the First Amendment has not been sullied. As usual, no one's perfect. As usual, our Madison police have done a wonderful job of letting people protest and speak and take action and express themselves while keeping those people safe. But the people that are destroying downtown, where I live and shop and bike with my kids, I haven't been able to bike down State Street with them for two days because my daughter would be too upset. And yes, she's upset about Mr. Floyd as well. You have to be kidding me. If the curfew, a curfew trying to restore order is the biggest thing you're upset about? A curfew at 9:30? You look at Madison and tell me that your First Amendment rights have been curtailed? The people doing this destruction, I don't know where they're from. I don't care who they're with. They need to be dealt with. Okay? Downtown has been destroyed. It's an emergency just like coronavirus. We have to stay home for our own safety, and now we have to restrict our First Amendment rights starting at 9:30 so that the authorities can hopefully restore order and bring those responsible for all this destruction to bear. My only complaint, Your Honor, is that you need to get out in the press, to the public, to those of us who live downtown every day. Tell us what you're doing.
Mr. Peets, your time is up.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is Colin from Kings Mill Way in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Will Gruber.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity and counsel. I am in opposition, in part because I've seen some of the impacts of the curfew already. I've seen children in their teens, early twenties peacefully protesting and being tear gassed from multiple sides. I've seen elderly woman, elderly woman have a gas can shot into her chest. I had an officer brandish a baton at me when I was peaceful. I've heard from others who live in the area, who live downtown, who are just as valid and valuable as anyone else there. Very upset, incredibly upset at the tear gas that this curfew not only permits, but helps to encourage, seeped into their homes, into the mouths and throats of their children, their babies. For what? For what? To protect an Urban Outfitters? No. This curfew is not just. This curfew does not do what it's intended for. The protesters are the ones keeping it safe. The MPD is escalating incidents. Part of why people are frustrated, I think, as a black person, the black man in this community, I think a lot of why people are frustrated is because they hear a lot about how progressive Madison is and Madison's leadership is, and they've heard it over and over. We've heard it over and over, and what we see often is the same old, same old, again and again. Our kids are the ones who are being sacrificed for white comfort. That's what happens. That happened again and again and again. And then when we fight about it, when we get angry about it, even if we're peaceful, it feels like the best we get is a committee and very little action. And it really doesn't feel a lot like leadership generally. I got personal love for y'all. I've met many of you, and I know that you are personally nice, very intelligent, great people. You're also elected leaders, and I hope you make the courageous decision tonight to say no to further militarization of the police in Madison and notice curfew. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Will Gruber of Gilson Street in opposition wishing to speak.
Mayor Will is not in the attendee list.
All right. Well, he was in opposition. And we also have a number of folks available to answer questions, so I'll just read.
There was one more registrant wishing to speak, Nola Pastor. I just refreshed the list, so.
All right. Do we have Nola Pastor with us?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm here via telephone. Volume okay?
Yep.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the tech issues. I thought I registered earlier. My name is Nola Pastor. I use she/her/their pronouns. I grew up in Madison. I've lived here most of my life, and I am also asking you to vote in opposition to the extension of the state of emergency. I want to echo concerns we've heard from folks already about hearing local elected officials, including many of you, recently tell us they're deeply concerned about institutional racism and police violence. We heard from MPD leadership saying you want to build trust with marginalized community members. And then we watched curfews go into place, the National Guard called in, and militarized police use tear gas and rubber bullets against protesters and bystanders frequently unannounced and unprovoked. So I want to ask, is this how you build trust? I work in violence prevention, and in my field, we call this gaslighting. When you tell a person or community that you care about them and then turn around and cause them direct harm, we consider that psychological abuse. I want to echo the call of Freedom, Inc., Urban Triage, and the Party for Socialism and Liberation for defunding of the police and community control of safety and accountability structures. As someone who does anti-violence work, I'm opposed to violence and coercion in all their forms, particularly when organized and justified as weapons of social control against vulnerable people. I want to recognize that abolition of the carceral state is not directly on the table tonight, but that the extension of the state of emergency and related curfews have direct implications for ongoing community repression and police violence and escalation. As other folks have said, we have evidence historically and from other communities that these strategies are not effective, and more importantly, I think it's clear to many of us that they are deeply unethical. As a bare minimum action in solidarity with organizers, protesters, and black and other marginalized community members in Madison, I'm asking you to vote no on this resolution. Recently, I've been invited and challenged by colleagues and others in my life to check in with my body and emotions about everything that's going on. I know from my work and my experience that what truly guides our action or lack thereof is how we feel, not what we know intellectually. So I want to ask all of you here tonight, what is your body telling you? What are you feeling? Shame, grief, anger, fear? What are you afraid of? What about love, compassion, and gratitude for young black and brown folks on the streets, grassroots organizers leading the work, community members who have not given up on the fight for accountability, and communities who have been resisting and resilient for hundreds of years? What is guiding you? What isn't? I believe in transformative justice and the possibility of all people to change with intention, hard work, and accountability from others. Change is politically and existentially terrifying for those in positions of relative power. That's just how it works. But the status quo is terrifying at a visceral level for people who have already lived lifetimes and generations of harm and exclusion, including in this city. I don't think it's hyperbolic to say that voting for curfews and lack of democratic process is voting in line with a national political agenda with blood on its hands right now. Additionally, doing that while saying you are opposed to state violence and systemic oppression is a mind game. In addition to your vote tonight against this resolution, I hope you will consider this contradiction when addressing the creation of an ad hoc accountability committee for MPD in a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pastor. And we have, again, a number of registrants not wishing to speak but available to answer questions, and they are Alejandra Perez of Patterson Street, Emma Shell of Norris Court, Kyle Cole of Patterson Street, Tyler Stewart Ellis of Blount, and Tiffany Kenny, sorry, all of those were in opposition and available to answer questions. And Tiffany Kenny of West Washington Ave and representing the bid and support and available to answer questions. So, and then I should note, there's a number of other registrants not wishing to speak, and I believe that Alders, you have that list available to you. So are there any questions for any of our registrants on this item? All right. Seeing none. Then President Carter, a motion.
I have a question for staff, but I'll go ahead and do the motion. Item 13260762, recommend to counsel to adopt.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And then questions for staff, President Carter?
Yes, I have a question for Chief Wall.
All right. Let me find Chief Wall. Give me a second. Chief Wall, go ahead. Go ahead, Alder Carter.
Thank you. Chief, can you tell me what the, what's the benefit of having the curfew versus not having a curfew?
Well, I think there's a, there's a few issues at play and a few things to, in my view, make it a valuable thing for us to have. You know, I think first, if you take a look at the last few days and what we've seen here in terms of destruction, looting, property damage, and violence, you know, it's certainly unprecedented in the high 29 years of MPD, and I think you have to go back to the protests and the war to find this level of unrest. And I think it's important for us to use every tool at our disposal to try to protect our downtown community, both businesses and residents. And I think sending a strong message that people need to ensure run here, stay out of the downtown area, and just avoid it, I think is a compelling piece of it. Secondly, as we saw Saturday night, when, you know, a relatively small group of about 150-year-old is sort of what started the problem, because it was a Saturday night, there was a lot of bystanders, there was a lot of passersby, there was a lot of just people in the area, and then really, really complicated our response and fueled the problem. You had a lot of people that jumped in and participated, and you just had a lot of people that were there to spectate and sort of watch the mayhem. And that made it much more difficult to police and much more difficult to bring some order to the situation. So having a curfew would also reduce the chance that if there is unrest or violence or property damage, that the crowd or the people engaging in that will grow, and it will, you know, having less of an audience might discourage people from participating in that. And finally, it just gives us one additional enforcement tool, if need be, to deal with people that are problematic in terms of engaging in that sort of behavior. Now, we've been very, very restrained in the use of the curfew, enforcement of the curfew over the last few nights, and it certainly has not been used on a wide basis. We have not used it at all on people that are just simply engaging in First Amendment activity, and it's only been when the event and the issues have gone to violence and property damage. If you look at the cities across the country that are facing the same type of unprecedented unrest as we are, and unfortunately, there's quite a few of them, I think most of them or a curfew has been a very consistent response to provide tools for police that are trying to protect life and property and to send a public message as to how important this issue is and how serious we are about trying to address it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, President Carter. Alder Rummel, questions for staff? Alder Rummel?
I do have questions for staff, but I also was hearing from Alejandra P. that he, I think, wished to speak. Can we? And he thought he registered as A-L-A-J-P, and you read his name differently, so I'm not sure what you're seeing versus what IT sees. I just wanted to speak.
Just refreshed.
He is registered in opposition but not wishing to speak, available to answer questions.
That's correct.
Okay. Then I guess I would ask him a question if the body would let me.
Is there any objection to going back to questions for registrants? I'm not seeing additional objections, Alder, so can we get that registrant back? Tech facilitators? Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you for contacting me. He is my constituent, I think, and written some comments about what you see as the deeper reforms that you would like us to work on, and if you'd care to share those thoughts, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, everyone, for giving me a moment to talk. My name's Alejandra Perez, pronouns she or they. And, you know, I kind of wrote out, not with like a really formed idea of what I wanted to say, but I see the curfew as an immediate Band-Aid to the situation, not actually looking at how it affects black lives and black protesters. And I do think that Chief Wall, while making very elaborate reasons for why we should have a curfew, is neglecting to actually see what we see when we watch our friends go live on Facebook and Twitter at night. What I'm seeing is an enormous amount of militarized police activity, and, you know, we don't want that. We want policy change. We want people to be giving us options, you know? Like if the UW would take away their involvement with the MPD or how, I mean, we don't, I don't know what I really want as a citizen, but I do want protesters to be safe, and I know that when black protesters are out there, the more cops that there are, the more dangerous it is for them. Why not, Chief Wall, help them get rid of the vandalizers, the people who are disrupting the protests? Have less people out there. Look out for your protesters. Your people are hurting them with tear gas, rubber bullets. You know, instead of sitting here for five hours debating what we need to do with a curfew, why don't we start thinking about policy change and actually discussing it and inviting our community members to be a part of that? Community members like me, you know, I don't have a political position. I, you know, work for whatever entities in the city, but we have to give up our comforts. We have to listen to the people, and we have to protect our protesters, specifically our black protesters, and we need to walk alongside them and amplify their voices and help them get this done. Thank you.
Alder, anything further?
Mayor, I do have a question, and, you know, I'll ask it, and the people who'd think they know the answer can maybe answer it, or maybe the sponsors. This looks like, this resolution looks like to me one of those things that we started doing, like you're going to do something and then take it to the council, and then we're kind of back approve it. And if you read the language, it says it expires in June 3rd, which is three hours from now, but I don't assume you mean it will expire at midnight. So if somebody could clarify, when on June 3rd? Does that mean it goes through tonight? Does that mean all the way through tomorrow night? What is intended with this resolution as it is written? Thank you.
Alder, I believe that's a question for an attorney, and I think that Attorney Paulson, who wrote the order, is here. So Attorney Paulson? Go ahead. You should be unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was written to be in effect through June 3rd, so it would expire at midnight tomorrow night on June 3rd.
Tomorrow night, you said?
Yeah, at 11:59 on June 3rd.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Alder, any further questions?
Not at this moment, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Verveer, questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a similar question of our council, so if I could ask Attorney Paulson a little bit of a follow-up here. The, the resolution that's before us now, as you say, expires in almost 24 hours if we adopt it. Is that correct?
Yes, but the council has the ability to extend the resolution and to change whatever they want within their resolution and extend the emergency proclamation and put other restrictions within the emergency proclamation. It just needed to be presented to the council at the next available meeting, and then you all have to make a decision on whether you want to extend it or what you would like to do with that.
And that's required by state statute?
Yes, sir.
So we all obviously have the language in front of us. The, the specifics of the curfew are not mentioned in this resolution, correct? This is simply about an overall state of emergency as opposed to the specifics of a curfew of a certain number of hours or a certain time that it would begin?
Correct. The resolution is adopting the state of emergency. The curfew was set by the mayor's emergency order this last time around.
And if you look at be further resolved, Attorney Paulson, number eight, can you explain the parenthetical statement there? It says content to be added at a council meeting of June 2 or section 8 deleted?
That was to give you, the council members, the authority if they wanted to put further restrictions or information within the resolution, such as adding a curfew during certain time periods, restricting traffic during certain time periods, whatever the council decided they wanted to do under the emergency proclamation.
If we adopted the resolution as currently drafted, am I correct that under the mayor's existing emergency order, I believe it's number four, that the curfew would only, as of this hour, will be in effect? Again, if we adopt the resolution as drafted, as presented to us, as per the motion, it simply would mean that the curfew that is scheduled to go into effect in approximately 30 minutes is valid until 5:00 AM the next morning? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what is the effect, please, Attorney Paulson, of if the council fails to adopt this resolution, if we place it on file or, or act in some way that's not affirmative?
Then the emergency proclamation would be over and the curfew would not be in effect.
And would that be at midnight in a few hours?
Well, the council could vote to end it at any point in time. So you could, you could amend the resolution and say you want, you know, immediately effective immediately, that the emergency proclamation is ended at X amount of time. The council could extend the emergency proclamation to whatever time you would like, or whatever day you would like, based on what's occurring.
Again, if, if a motion does not include further language in, in clause A, therefore be resolved, the, the mayor's existing order, which was a two-night curfew, would continue but only through 5:00 AM Wednesday morning, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, Mayor, if I might, I did have a question or two of Chief Wall.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief Wall, I'm sure that there are many folks that are watching or listening to our meeting tonight that were not doing the same at our 4:30 Common Council Executive Committee meeting where you were asked several questions about the current tragedies and series of disturbances we've now suffered for three days downtown. Could, could you address something that I don't, that I don't believe was, was asked yet of you either at the earlier meeting or tonight so far, and that is, under what authority do you and other law enforcement personnel that have been working the last three days have to engage in activities that obviously you've heard through the public testimony, believe have been overzealously deployed? You know, the word militarization and so forth, and the concerns about OC or gas being deployed, does this emergency order by the mayor in this state of emergency that we're now discussing, debating whether or not to continue in any way, shape, or form, does that authorize your officers, those that are under your command through mutual aid, to engage in any particular activities that, that we've heard great offense taken to?
I think the short answer is no, and the, the times when we have had to, you know, put on protective gear and deploy chemical agents have had nothing to do with the curfew, and they would have happened with or without a curfew. So they could happen under the Wisconsin statutes for unlawful assemblies, and then just our standard use of force policies and constitutional guidelines on use of force. So the curfew has not been part of that equation at what you're asking.
Thank you. So I've been asked this question by several people over the last couple of days, particularly after the actions on the Capitol Square on Sunday night, this is all a blur, of course, Sunday night, and, and starting on the square and moving into residential neighborhoods and so forth, although I would make the strong case that every block almost downtown is residential in some nature or another. But nonetheless, I know from firsthand experience, both at prior times during my tenure when I've been present, when chemical agents have been dispersed in the crowd, like the Mifflin Street Block Party and Halloween, Sun State Street, free dating, Freak Fest, that, as you did mention, and I have to admit it was a little hard to hear you because of the, the weather going on, and I'm sitting near windows, but, but I've always heard an attempt to, before mass dispersal is used, where an officer declares an unlawful assembly under state statute. Am I correct that whether or not the mayor had ever issued a curfew, that has absolutely nothing to do with the tactics that have been made by your special events team and others over the last couple of days?
Yeah, that, that decision, the unlawful assembly decision, and with the prior examples, as you've described, either on Mifflin Street or Halloween in prior years, is not related to, to the curfew. It's related to behavior and the risk to property or, or violence.
And am I correct that, that officers are always ordered, instructed by the command post, before permission is given to deploy gas or what have you, that a proclamation and that announcement be made of an unlawful assembly?
Yes, that, that runs through the command structure, and typically, the incident commander would be the one giving final approval for that under normal circumstances.
So again, the inaugural proclamation of the state of emergency and the specific emergency orders of the last couple of days, again, have, had nothing to do with your rights, your requirements under Wisconsin state statute to utilize the unlawful assembly statute?
That's correct.
Thank you. Because again, I do believe that there, and I understand it, Chief, but I do believe that there is widespread inception that the mayor's orders have given you license and all of the agencies working under your command to engage in any variety of specific tactics, when I just don't believe that that is the case at all, either from my personal observations, being down there, or listening to traffic on police radios. So I think that that's important, to make that distinction, and if necessary, I think if it's helpful to any of my colleagues to understand that, to have Assistant City Attorney Paulson or Attorney Haas to explain 947.06 of the statutes, and how what we're discussing now has absolutely nothing to do with the unlawful assembly statute, which is what has been utilized by the police when they have attempted to clear spaces, streets, et cetera. I think those are my questions for now, although if I could, Madam Mayor, just with one last thing, could, could Attorney Paulson just confirm that what I just said and what the chief said is accurate and, and correct? Me if I'm wrong on any of this?
Yes, Attorney Paulson? I think you have to unmute yourself.
Technical issues, yes, you are correct, Alder Verveer, and what Chief Wall indicated is correct also, under the statute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I honestly think that this is going to be sort of a repackaging of Alder Verveer's, one of Alder Verveer's questions, but Attorney Paulson, if I'm not mistaken, so if we take action in the affirmative on, on this resolution as it is currently before us, I'm interpreting this right, that the state of emergency would be over tomorrow as well as a potential curfew at 5:00 AM, correct?
Is that a question for the attorney, Alder?
Yes, that's correct. The curfew would end, as it's written right now, would end tomorrow morning at 5:00 AM, and then the state of emergency would end tomorrow night.
Okay, so in the event that the mayor felt that, for whatever reason, that the state of affairs would require that we would need to extend the curfew for another day or, you know, have an additional day, what would need to happen in that, in that event that the mayor would identify that as a need?
And she would need to, if, if this resolution is only adopted through tomorrow night, then she would need to issue another emergency proclamation to cover future dates if the council decides they don't want to extend it past tomorrow night?
And so would that require action of the council, sure to do another emergency? How would that play out?
The mayor could issue, under the statute, the mayor is authorized to issue another emergency proclamation. She would then have to present it, it would have to come to the council at the next available meeting for adoption or changes or adaptation.
Okay, so if she were to do this tomorrow, she would tell that nothing would be in effect then? It would have to come before us for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything further, Alder?
Um.
I should say, any further questions, Alder?
Yeah, so, so basically, Alder, Attorney Paulson, this is one last question, and so there would be no, I'm just trying to make sure that I, I get it, that if, if tomorrow the mayor identifies a state of emergency needs to be extended and putting in another curfew, she would not have that ability to do so, right? She could go through a mechanism, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't have authority until the council would take action on it?
Attorney Paulson, you're muted again. Or no, there we go.
No, the mayor would have authority. So if tomorrow night, the mayor determines that she needs to issue another emergency proclamation and another curfew in effect or whatever restrictions are necessary, the proclamation would basically start over again. So she would issue another emergency and place whatever order she needs to be in effect, and then those all would be in effect until the council, until they were presented to the council.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. The mayor does have that authority. I appreciate you clarifying that for me, and I forgive me that it took a couple of questions to, to get to the answer, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday. Alder Balday, go ahead.
My first question is to Attorney Paulson. So can you explain how the previous order was instituted, the, the expiring order? How was that instituted? How did that came about?
Based on the events that were occurring on Saturday night, the mayor issued the emergency proclamation. Based on what was occurring in the civil unrest, she issued her emergency proclamation, and within that emergency proclamation, she imposed the two days of curfew. Once it was obvious that the chief and the mayor felt that we needed to extend the curfew, then she issued the order that is in effect, was in effect last night and tonight, and then those are, that's how the curfew is covered right now. But the emergency proclamation was issued on Saturday and only went through Wednesday.
So why is it that the mayor is not able to do it this time again, and she's coming to council? What has changed? What, what is the law around that?
The mayor has the authority to issue the proclamation, so she could issue another one and then come back to council for that if there's a need for that.
So she can do this without coming to council at all?
No, under statute, she, it has to be presented to the council.
So how was the previous order legal then, if it wasn't presented to council?
It, it is before the council right now, Alder.
But it is already implemented, like the past few days. How was that legal?
She issued the emergency proclamation on Saturday, and that's what we're at the council now. Within the emergency proclamation, she issued orders that were covered by the emergency proclamation. So it's all one thing that is being presented to you tonight.
Okay. So this question is to the police chief. So from your observation, is the curfew being observed by the demonstrators or not?
By the demonstrators, well, I guess I should say, there's obviously a lot of people that are showing up and violating it. I don't know if it's in some people's homes, so I don't, you know, what we don't see, obviously, we don't know down there. So it's possible that some people are choosing to stay home. I think outside of the folks that are actively sort of involved, it's definitely, in my view, keeping sort of the volume of people down significantly. And so I think, clearly, last night, we saw that there was not a lot of other people out. And certainly, there's probably a lot of other good reasons for that, but that's an important benefit of it, in my view, as well.
Do you see any correlations between your presence and lack of presence as to how the demonstrators behave?
Well, there's not an easy answer to that question. Certainly, we, as we've looked at every night, you know, we've tried to sort of fine tune what our approach is and try different strategies, and, you know, I don't think we've found, obviously, the perfect recipe just yet. Certainly, last night, for a good portion of the night, the fact that there were no visible officers was working pretty well, but then it turned on a dime and, and, you know, it did a 180 and was very bad very quickly. And so it's hard to tell if that would have been different with officers present or not, but certainly we'll be, you know, looking at some, some different approaches to try to avoid the exact type of scenario we saw last night. So it, it's hard to give a direct answer to your question, because I just, I just don't know.
So how does the state of emergency make your job any easier or more difficult? I mean, people are out there. I mean, I think they have the right to be there. If there is an emergency or a, a curfew imposed on them, then obviously past the time they're breaking the law or something. But without that curfew, generally, what is the difference? I mean, without having the, the state of emergency instituted, how does that really hamper your work if you're just there to maintain peace and make sure that no property is done? Why do you need the, the emergency order or the Why do you need the emergency order or the curfew?
Well, you know, I look at it this way, the issue that we faced the last three nights is unprecedented, and in terms of policing it successfully is a remarkable challenge to try to sort of balance and thread the needle between allowing and respecting First Amendment expression and still providing protection to public safety and to property and to avoid, unfortunately, what we've seen, and it's not easy. And so we have to try to use every tool, strategy, know-how that we have available to us, and the curfew is just one piece of that. And as I think I mentioned at CCEC, you know, we've been very vicious in how we've used it, but, you know, this is, it's hard to convey here in this sort of scaring, just how chaotic, you know, these nights have been once they've gone bad. And so there can be individuals that are out engaging in behavior that's violent, that's criminal, that's damaging property, but at the time when we see them, we may not be able to have all those facts or be able to create those charges and that probable cause right at that very instant. But the curfew allows us to take them into custody and arrest them and remove them from the problem and reduce chances for them to be continuing that behavior. You know, we certainly haven't taken the approach that, you know, some other cities have, where they've basically have enacted a curfew and tried to arrest anybody, enforce it fully, and we haven't taken that approach, and I think we've, you know, certainly been quite a bit more progressive on that. So, but the curfew, you know, to me, is one thing that is going to help us try to resolve this and get ahead of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer. Alder Lemmer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question for Attorney Paulson, and it's just to verify what my understanding is. So the curfew is one aspect of the emergency proclamation, and the council can modify or remove the curfew aspect, but keep the emergency proclamation in place, right?
Yeah, the council can remove the curfew if that's what they choose to do. They're right also, right now in place is the closing of the businesses in the downtown area and prohibiting vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the downtown area. That's also part of what's the order currently.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Chief Wall, and I've been trying to find a way to phrase it and formulate it, and I can't think of like the right way to do it, so I'm just going to share what my, like, observation or, like, thoughts are, and then just ask for you to respond. So I, I think it makes sense that curfew is keeping, you know, bystanders away, and in that way, is making the situation safer, but it also, it appears like folks who are coming out see it as, as a challenge, and it could be, or is increasing the number of folks who are coming out, because they, you know, perhaps they, you know, see it as, you know, almost symbolic of systemic problems that they are demonstrating against to begin And, you know, with the large numbers of folks that we've been seeing out there the last few nights, do you, I guess, what are your, what is your response to that? I mean, do you think it's possible that, you know, folks are seeing this as a challenge and more folks are coming out because of the curfew than they, than would otherwise?
Well, certainly, that's an excellent point, and we've had those discussions ourselves as we've talked about, you know, the validity or the value of the curfew. And I think certainly, there may be some people, I think certainly, last night, there was an element that, that was the, what brought them out, was the curfew and to see whether we would enforce it or not. And ultimately, as we've weighted and balanced that against the ultimate benefit that it provides us, I think we've concluded that it, it still does provide us a benefit. I think, as I said, you know, we've been pretty, extremely reticent in how we utilize it to enforce it, and I think if people purely want to challenge the curfew and come down and do nothing else, I think they'll probably get bored of that, as they saw last night, that we're not going to go out and just start wholesale arresting people once 9:30 rolls around. So your point is well taken, and I think it's possible that that may impact some people, but it's pretty hard to, to know for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Lemmer basically asked my question, because that's the thing I'm struggling with, whether it's, it's sort of a prompting defiance in ways that just adds on to the situation. And obviously, I'm not there every day or observing as much as some of you, so, but that's the question I have. And just now, to be the third person to summarize, here's what I think from Attorney Paulson. If this were adopted, the curfew would end tomorrow at 5:00 AM, but the state of emergency would end at 11:39 PM tomorrow night.
Yes, 9:00 PM tomorrow night, because when we, when this all went into effect, emergency proclamation, I think we had no idea that we'd still be in the situation where we are four days later. I think the hope was that after a day or two, it wouldn't even be needed.
And maybe one follow-up question for the chief. Does your intel on the streets indicate people are going to be out tonight, or anything you know right now, just from communication with staff? What is, how does it looking tonight?
Well, we've seen the benefit of this storm that's come through, which is worked in our favor. So there, before that, there was, there were some people gathered up on the top of the Capitol Square, up on the Capitol grounds, but then I've been here with you folks and when the rain came through, so I don't have an update on how things are now, but certainly, we don't have any specific intel about what we're anticipating tonight in terms of downtown protests. There's things elsewhere in the city that we're getting intelligence about and are looking into, but not downtown.
And so, and just forgive me for just repeating what I'm hearing, just to make sure I understand. So from the line of Alder Verveer's questions, it sounds like through the unlawful assembly statute, you could have done any of the things you would do with or without a curfew, but you believe the curfew gives a tool because that then allows you to stop an activity kind of based on a lower bar? Like, you know, we saw that picture in the press today of these women walking out of the shoe store, and you can't necessarily charge them with burglary right away without more investigation, but you could say, hey, you're violating curfew. Is that a fair assessment of how you see it?
I think, just, not exactly, I think a slight tweak, I think the question was really focused on the unlawful assembly declaration, which would happen when there's an initial crowd with violence or disturbance of property damage, and we would give that order and disperse the crowd. And so what we've seen the last few nights is, sort of, that's happened, and then the rest of the night has been sort of a, almost to the downtown area, as the group, a large group breaks into small groups. At some point, as we get further removed from that initial declaration, not every group of people on the street corner is an unlawful assembly as part of that original declaration. And so that's where the curfew really comes in and provides value, if we think those are folks that are engaged in some of the property damage, or the example you provided is of looting. So just a slight tweak as to how you're describing it.
Okay, and then, so what you're saying is that you would have to go around declaring an unlawful assembly to every small group that had dispersed versus having a curfew, which then doesn't require that level of declaration?
Well, I think, well, we would have to declare it if it was in fact unlawful assembly, so it's not like a, you mean, permanent, you know, declaration, obviously, it's, there can be some, so when you get to two people standing on the street corner 20 minutes after the initial encounter, then they may not be, they may not meet the standard of an unlawful assembly, and then we would, it wouldn't just be a matter of making announcements, we wouldn't have any options for those folks.
Thank you, that helps, I'm done with the question.
Thank you, Alder. All right, President Carter.
Yes, Chief Wall, so we had the curfew last night, I believe it was 9:30, and we had protesters, nonviolent, at the Capitol until like 1:00 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
1:00 AM. And then they dispersed, if I remember correctly, and then a crowd broke off from them, am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay, and that crowd that broke off from them went down on State Street and did damage, but the initial protesters, even though we had a curfew, because they were peaceful, they were allowed to stay.
That's correct.
And that is the type of, for lack of a better word, that is the type of operation that you're trying to continue, whereas if it's peaceful, that's fine, stay as long as you want, but it's that splinter group that is of concern, and that is where the curfew and unlawful assembly takes hold?
Yeah, it's focused on behavior and what we're seeing, and I think, you know, a good analogy is just sort of the march yesterday, where the group marched down to John Nolan Drive and occupied John Nolan Drive in North Shore for, you know, a number of hours. That's obviously illegal to block the roadway like that, but it's clearly, they're expressing First Amendment's viewpoints, it's not creating a public safety or property damage risk, and so we want to facilitate that and block traffic and make sure that they can do what they're doing safely, and that's what we did, and that's how we do business.
Mm-hmm.
Curfew applies the same way, in my view.
And then on the Belt Line, how did that work? Does that work the same way?
Yeah, it's the same thought.
Where you blocked it off so they would be safe?
Yeah, I mean, it was a little bit different in terms of the nuts and bolts of it, but the whole thing today was just sort of doing sort of traffic control and keep them safe and then do some rerouting of other motorists to try to, you know, prevent backups and they needed to go.
Okay, so when I was doing some research earlier today, some of the research said that protests usually last five to six days. What is your feeling, you know, Madison's a little bit different, and we proud ourselves for being unique, so what is your feeling on where this is going to go? The memorial for George Floyd in Minneapolis is tomorrow, I mean, is Thursday, and the funeral is Monday in Houston. So what are you, what are you here, what are you thinking?
Well, I hope we're, I guess, for me, it's a distinction, and if, I'm just talking about protesting, peaceful protesting, like we saw today, for example, and saw yesterday, initially down here, you know, I don't have a huge concern if that goes on for a long time. It's obviously dependent, and it takes a lot of our staff time and our bandwidth away from other things, but that's, that's part of the job, and if that goes on for a long time, that's fine, and, you know, I think, if you look back to the Act 10 protests, those were certainly very large crowds, very labor intensive and very extended in duration. That's fine. In terms of the other piece of it, the violence, the looting, the property damage, I mean, I hope that's over, hopefully, we've seen the end of it, and I hope that, you know, we'll continue to impress upon everybody in the community that it's not something that we want to accept. Now, that can happen, I just, I just don't know yet, so we don't have solid intelligence on it, certainly, many other cities across the country that are seeing this type of unrest, it started earlier and has been continuing, and so, but I just don't know, we'll be, you know, planning and preparing for the best we can for it to continue, and, but I'm hoping for calm starting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. These couple of questions are for Chief Wall, too. I know this might be, I'm looking for an estimate, I guess. In your opinion, have there been any arrests of, I'll call them, non-looters, based on violations of the, of the curfew?
Well, yes, probably, I mean, I think, there's other things, behaviors, like property damage and things that we are concerned about, you know, in terms of disorder and public safety risk, so I don't think we can certainly say that all of the folks that were issued curfew citations definitively were taking part in looting.
So you, other public safety concerns, when, so it's like physical confrontation or property damage, do you think there have been any people that you might call, you know, nonviolent protesters that may have been arrested for curfew violations?
I definitely don't think so, I mean, as I've been watching these unfold the last three nights, you know, we have made a very small number of arrests for curfew, and the officers, I think, have been very, you know, through a lot of restraint in making arrests, and really trying to focus on serious behavior, and so we just haven't done it, in my view. Now, I haven't read the reports from each of these citations, and we just haven't had the capacity to do that, so I don't want to give you an absolutely definitive answer, but my impression from what I've seen and heard and observed is, is no.
Thanks, just, and another question, can you, you know, let's say that everybody in MPD has gotten this message, that the citations are for this specific purpose, and not the citations, the curfew is for this purpose of dealing with the situation once it gets away from the larger group of nonviolent protesters, let's say, and, but there are other law enforcement agencies involved, the National Guard, and at times, the Dane County Sheriff's, even state troopers. How does them, is there a chain of command that dictates that they understand that also?
What you highlight, you know, one of the challenges of the last few days and what we've seen is trying to, in very short order, in the midst of a crisis, integrate agencies and processes we've never worked with before previously. As far as the National Guard goes, they don't have any arrest authority, and they always have officers embedded with them, so they're never making any decisions about arresting or taking action, that's always done directly in our direction. As far as the outside agencies, to be honest with you, my guess is that all the outer county outside agencies are probably pretty oblivious to this whole discussion and the fact that there's even a curfew as an option, so they've been placed in spots that are with much more fixed assignments and fixed rules rather than, so that the times when we're trying to directly engage with people or make arrests, has almost exclusively been MPD, because we want to make sure that we're the ones doing that, because we're going to be doing a follow-up, doing investigations, that sort of thing. So, but certainly, we, we have worked to improve our sort of orientation and communication with the other agency folks when they arrive, but as much as possible, we're trying to stay integrated in them.
And just maybe one follow-up question. So on a night like tonight, when it's totally unknown, you know, what the needs might be for law enforcement, there are potentially several other municipalities that are available, or are they ready to go in terms of offering assistance to you? And where are those officers at a time like now, when the curfews? And where are those officers at a time like now when the curfew's 11 minutes in, I guess? And how does that, is it, do you wait to activate those people until a situation fires it?
Well, they will all be physically here in Madison, because if there's a need for them, we can't, you know, wait for them to come from another county. So they'll be, you know, staged, available, equipped, and we will have done all the check-ins and coordination with them, both National Guard and outside agency. But they won't be deployed out, you know, to the streets or to any place in the public, for the most part. The only exception is that I know last night, because of what we have been seeing citywide, we've been carrying up some outside agency officers with our officers and patrol vehicles and small task force respond to like looting at the malls and those sorts of things. So those folks have been deployed out in standard uniform with our patrol officers. The crowd control teams from other agencies are just all staged and ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue on Questions for Staff. All right, so Alder Verve.
Thank you, Mayor. This is discussion, correct?
Yep.
Thank you. So I know each and every one of you knows the geographic area generally that I've been elected to represent. This is unprecedented, what we're going through downtown. I think everybody in the community was overwhelmed and with grief and anger at the murder of George Floyd and other similarly situated victims of state-sanctioned violence against African-Americans. But the fact that some people are using that unspeakable tragedy and systematic racism and inequality and oppression to create this unmitigated violence downtown is absolutely untenable. I can't tell you how angry and saddened I've been the last few days. We've worked years to try to make downtown what it is, and literally in a matter of hours has been torn apart. If you were in my shoes, you would feel this unprecedented overwhelming grief and anger, of course, about what's happening around the country, about wanting justice, about what's happening here in downtown Madison. I have spent since Saturday evening to this hour on the receiving end of very appropriately so distraught downtown stakeholders. I'm talking about residents, I'm talking about merchants, I'm talking about property owners, I'm talking about cultural institutions, like museums, that have been trashed. So when this started Saturday, I went to the mayor's office and I said, "Will a curfew be imposed? When will there be a curfew? If not, why not?" And without going into all those details, to her credit, Mayor Earl Chief of Staff Mary Batari realized how distraught I was. And she said, "Where are you? I want to come find you." Well, at that point, I had left State Street, and I had received text messages from constituents saying that the CVS store in the Basset neighborhood was being looted by at least a half dozen individuals. This was Saturday night. So I ran over there because so many people were afraid, and there are a lot of constituents of mine that live above the CVS store. They were the ones that called 911 and noticed the looting taking place. Anyway, Mary came over to meet me there. And we had a talk about the curfew. And I know that Chief Wall had requested that the mayor impose a curfew Saturday night. Anyway, I was relieved to know that a curfew indeed had been ordered by the mayor, and I thank you for that, Mayor. The reality is, is that I think it came too late to do a lot of good Saturday night. My main argument as to why I thought a curfew would be helpful is not under any misconception that the folks that are engaging in unprecedented violence downtown would be in any way, shape, or form guided by a curfew. Of course not. People have asked me for the last several days, "Has a curfew worked?" Well, all you have to do is go anywhere near State Street, not even on State Street, and see the, all the destruction on the side streets. Obviously, if you look at it at face value, the curfew's been an utter failure. However, my main argument, and the mayor's office knows this, was that it would keep innocent bystanders, at least in some part, away from the downtown and stress the urgency through the media that the downtown is literally a war zone, which is what it was. So the whole idea behind the curfew, I just want my colleagues to know, was to keep innocent bystanders off of the street so they wouldn't be injured. It was to keep law-abiding folks from wanting to go down there and gawk and see what the situation was and survey the damage and watch close hand as if the live TV coverage wasn't enough. And I think it did help at least Sunday night, Monday night, last night. And as we've already discussed, I think Mother Nature, I pray, will help us get through tonight without violence. So that's what this is all about. It pains me when folks, some folks that I consider friends testified tonight angry that a curfew was imposed because they believe that it has given carte blanche to the Madison Police Department and all of the mutual aid agencies that have assisted us from literally all corners of the state. As I said in our earlier 4:30 meeting, I literally have talked to and thanked for their service men and women from all over the state that have come here to respond to this unprecedented mutual aid emergency request that we put out. I met a state trooper and talked to him from as far away as Superior. I've talked to sheriff's deputies from all sorts of counties all over the state, not just adjacent to Dade County. This is an absolute emergency. I'm not old enough to have been around during the Vietnam War protests in the campus area, but everyone that has, has offered an opinion to me says, "It wasn't like this. There wasn't this sort of violence. There wasn't looting." Yes, windows were broken all over the place. But in terms of what happened to State Street, greater State Street area during those protests back then, this is unprecedented. I mentioned earlier in a preamble to the question of staff that I've lived through Nifflin Street Black Party riots. I've lived through Halloween riots before Freak Fest was created. This pales in comparison. There is nothing, and I knew that within hours of what I saw on State Street. It was way worse than any of the vandalism, any of the violence, any of the looting that we had seen at any of those State Street riots of the early 2000s when I was in office representing State Street. This was total mayhem. It was mob rule run amok, and it was horrific. And I have spent every hour that I can stay awake since Saturday night to try to I'm sorry, I might get emotional, but to try to provide empathy to folks that are in the State Street area. You see, I know these people. The vast, vast majority are small mom-and-pop merchants. A huge percentage of them are immigrants, people of color, whose livelihoods have been ripped away from them as if the pandemic wasn't enough. Our downtown businesses were struggling and needed all the support that we could give them in the recovery from the pandemic, now more than ever, and then to have this happen to them. I have heard from so many that are so distraught, they say they will never reopen again. They are leaving downtown Madison. I realize that, and I pray that much of that was because of the heat of the moment conversations with me and the misery, the agony that they're going through, the fact that they don't know how they're going to pay their rent, their mortgages, their homes. There are families that are supporting jobs that these people have and are providing in the State Street area whose businesses have been completely trashed. And yes, before people get upset at me and say that Verve is comparing property and looting and other damage to lives that have been taken away from people at the hands of state-sponsored violence like George Floyd, I'm not saying that. What I am saying that these are real, live people. I said at our earlier meeting, there are people living all over State Street. There are thousands of people living on State Street, if you include just three high-rise student apartment buildings around Francis Street. I was scared to death, and I continue to be, that this living nightmare will get worse if there's arsons. I know for a fact, because people have told me, they have seen people trying to light stores on fire, throwing Molotov cocktails. There were Molotov cocktails thrown at the Capitol last night. There were Molotov cocktails thrown in the State Street area last night. There were more than one gun person, that's because I don't know if they are men or women, but people shooting guns on State Street last night with people living there. Yes, a lot of the merchants actually are still, were still in their stores trying to protect what little was left, but forget about them. How about all the people that live above these storefronts? Their lives are in jeopardy because of the shootings last night, because of the fact that they could have had their homes burned down. You can tell my emotion. It is very upset. I've represented this area for 25 years, and the place has been destroyed in a matter of days. And I broke down crying day after day, and I just can't take this anymore. So let me try to conclude by saying, think of this vote, what signal it will send if you say that what little, little need or support we can give people downtown is having its curfew or not go on for another five hours tonight. What signal that would send if you say no? There's widespread, and you heard a little of the testimony tonight, there's widespread belief that city leaders, including me, don't give a darn, that we haven't said enough to support those that are struggling that have been victimized downtown since Saturday night. You will send the worst signal possible if you say, "To hell with you. We don't care." Even though this is only about five hours extending the curfew from midnight to 5 a.m. in the middle of what I hope will be a horrific rainstorm that will help us keep some semblance of calm downtown tonight for the first time since Saturday evening. I'm sorry I'm getting so emotional about this, but I want you all to know that this curfew has nothing to do with how the police have chosen to use whatever tools are at their disposal to clear the streets. I've been down there during these disturbances. They don't say, "Curfew is in effect. Disperse. Curfew." No. They say, "You've been ordered to disperse. This has been declared an unlawful assembly by state law." They don't say, "It's because of the mayor of Madison's emergency proclamation that we have a curfew and in effect, that's why you have to disperse, and if you don't, we're going to deploy chemicals." Please don't make the, be confused by this. I totally understand the advocates that testified tonight against the curfew, thinking that somehow a curfew is a nod toward so-called militarization of our police force. It is not. I will close by saying what this was. The reason why I asked for the curfew to be imposed, and I was not the only one asking for it Saturday, was because I thought in some way it would help people stay safe. I thought it would help bring peace to a very untenable situation, that it would encourage people that, of course, are not going armed with guns, with crowbars, with hammers that hell-bent on destruction, on whether it's against humans or against property. Of course, I knew that those folks were not going to pay any attention to a curfew, but it would, but it would get sent the signal that it is a dangerous situation. Stay clear of the area. Let the police try to bring peace to the area. And I appreciate that not all of us believe that the police tactics have been helpful, that they've been useful, that they're maybe only making matters worse. I get that. I get the point that maybe the curfew is just encouraging troublemakers to try to defy the curfew order. I get all that. Again, please think that as the motion is before us tonight, it literally is to allow the curfew to not end abruptly at midnight in a few hours and let it continue through 5 a.m. That's all, that's the net effect of all of this under the current motion with the resolution as worded before us tonight. So I, again, please, I realize that this might seem overly symbolic. I realize, because I've heard, talked to them too, that some of you have heard firsthand from people that have been pepper sprayed. I've been pepper sprayed. I was pepper sprayed Saturday night. I get it. I've been there. But the fact of the matter is, is that you will send such a negative signal. It's not going to be a signal against the so-called militarization of the cops if this is voted down. You're sending a signal to all those folks downtown that are struggling to make any sense of this nightmare that they're living through. I urge you to not send that negative signal tonight that we don't care about you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to keep silent, but who I am would not allow me to do that. I went to Ferguson, Missouri after the death of Michael Brown, and I saw a city totally burned down and destroyed. And many of the people who lived in that area were devastated because people, and I'm not saying that people from the outside came in to downtown. I'm not saying that. But they still have not rebuilt their city. It is still in turmoil. And I say this because what I heard tonight greatly disturbed me because it, I get it that there is anger and there is emotions and the root cause of 400 years of racial disparities. I get that. I'm a living witness for that. I get that. The other side of the coin is that when I heard the brother of George Floyd say to the people, "What are you doing? What are you doing? None of this will bring my brother back to life. If you are concerned, go out and vote." He was traumatized. He lost his brother. He collapsed at the place where his brother took his last breath. And when you walk down, and I walked down on State Street, I purposely went down there on Sunday to see for myself, and I did see a war zone. And so I mentioned this because Martin Luther King said something like, and I wrote it down, "Let us realize the art of moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." And there is no justice in what we are seeing. And so there were good-intentioned people who were crying and said, "What can I do to change this?" I get that. But there was a small group of individuals who purposely took advantage of the goodwill, that purposely went down to the area to do ill will. We cannot excuse that. We cannot excuse that. And so for people who live there, or the altar who was so emotional, I cannot even imagine what the people that lived in that area will feel. what the people that lived in that area will feel. And so it doesn't matter what people say about me, but I just want you to have a sense of the people who live there, the people whose businesses have been closed. And I don't care about people saying, "Well, you care about this," over people. They say that they don't even know me, but I absolutely will not give a pass to the people that purposely came down to that area to do harm, to do no good. And whatever you decide, what is that message? And so when we don't support this, then what are we saying? What are the messages that we're saying? It's not about the police. The police is, there's a larger concern about how police operate. I'm not getting them off of that, that concern, because that is definitely something that we must dig into. But what's before us tonight is to give a semblance of peace to the people who live there, to the businesses that live there. And when I heard that the library was vandalized, when I heard that the museum was vandalized, and so we've got to take a stand. And so I stepped out, not to be silent, but just to remind us to say, this is not perfect, but this is not right. And for us not to, to think that we're going to resolve 400 years of disparities and what Black people have gone through with, with not passing this extension of the curfew, it's not going to happen. And so for all of you who are good intentions, and I get that, this is not going to happen overnight. And if we can say as a council to stay up and say that bad actors, we will not tolerate this, this is how we stand up. And so I'm going to support the extension of the curfew because it is absolutely, I believe, the right thing to do.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. I do, Alder Alberas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Verveer, I just want to say to you that I appreciate how raw you've been about this tonight. I appreciate that you care so much for your district, that you care so much for our city. And the fact that you're letting us see, you know, you in this emotional state, but also in my, in my opinion, sort of an advocacy state, just says a lot about you. So I want to say thank you for, for being so candid and being so raw with us. I think that this conversation is not easy to have on, on any side, because as you can see, the, the conversation has been very charged internally and also from the people who've given us public comment tonight. So I just want to say thank you for, for sharing your perspective, because I hope that it helps people as they make a decision on this resolution before us. As Alder McKinney said, and as even you've said, that a lot of this has to do with the fact that we just want to protect the folks who are living down there. And we definitely want to support folks who, who are expressing their First Amendment right for tragedies and for inequities and for things that are just absolutely horrific that have, that we've seen this past week. And so I, I want to say that as well, as I make this, these comments. But, but again, thank you for, for sharing your perspective and being so raw during this time. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I will be supporting the extension. You know, I think that there should, you know, be conversations about even amending it for, for the, the mayor's latitude to see if there's, if there's any need for, for having things go further. But anyways, in, in other case, I'm going to support this as it, as it is written currently. And I just want you to know, Alder Verveer, again, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being honest with us tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also want to thank Alder Verveer for sharing it from his heart. I do recall the last pre-Free Fest Halloween, there were over 500 individuals arrested during that riot. There have been very few arrested during the last three days of people who were doing property damage, people who were looting. The deployment of MPD's resources seems to have been geared more, less towards protecting the stores and more about, I don't know what. I do want to tell a brief story, and then I'll share how I intend to vote. I had been tear gassed before. I was in Seattle in 1999 in the protests against the WTO, the World Trade Organization. It was a peaceful protest. I was hijacked by the Black Bloc anarchist group, and an unlawful assembly was declared. A group of us were peacefully protesting, and we were tear gassed. I was pissed. It hurts to be tear gassed. I was angry. It did not pacify me. It alienated me terribly. Tear gas and pepper spray on peaceful protesters does not help. It only makes things worse. What would have made things better in this instance? In Camden, New Jersey, the chief of police kneeled with the protesters. In Santa Cruz, the mayor and chief of police kneeled with the protesters. Curfews and tear gas have not helped. Alder Verveer made that clear. Chief Walz said that the curfew really doesn't get addressed unlawful behavior. It, it is, it's the unlawful assembly state law that does that. So what would have helped? Responding to the 1,500 emails that we received over the last few days would have helped, but we have not tonight. We did not respond to it. We had an opportunity to do so, and we chose not to. Our people were looking for an immediate response, acknowledging Tony Robinson early and making the connection that what we've been dealing with the last five years is connected. The previous police chief, Chief Walz's predecessor justified Tony Robinson's killing and believed that we should not have settled the lawsuit, but that if we would have fought it, we would have won. And that is the backdrop of what our people are experiencing right now. So whether, what's the story going to be in the newspaper tomorrow? That we extended the curfew five more hours, or we stopped it? It makes no difference. What really makes a difference is what we do moving forward. Perhaps there needs to be a call to collective repentance, where we get on our knees for eight minutes and 46 seconds in a moment of silence. What needs to happen is maybe lower the city flag to half staff and mourn for where we're at as a city. Maybe what would make a difference is call upon those who have been leading the protesters to work with us, to send a message out to people who would only do those businesses harm, who would only do those immigrant shop owners harm, and that we would police the streets ourselves and tell MPD and the National Guard that they don't need to do it. Indiscriminate use of tear gas on peaceful protesters because we declared an unlawful assembly only makes things worse. And if we do away with the curfew, we'll still be left with that option. A change in strategy is a call for, a change in our hearts, a call for repentance, a demand that we really take stock of where we are at a city. Only then will things change. Only then. What we do, what we vote on right now is symbolic. The symbol can go one way or other way, but people waking up tomorrow, it's not going to make that much difference. What will make a difference is how we decide to move forward from here. I will support Alder Verveer on allowing this curfew to go to 5:00 AM. I will not support adding another minute beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
So I just want to get started with, by re-echoing what the previous two Alders said about Alder Verveer. I've been in the council with you for about five, six years now. I've never seen you this emotional, so I understand where you're coming from and how you feel about the situation, not only of your district, but of our downtown. So the downtown is all of our downtown. So I believe that the police have all the tools that they need to maintain peace and make sure that property is not damaged. We do not, in my opinion, need a curfew or any emergency to, to, to stop people from looting or damaging property. We all agree that no matter how painful it is to see a Black person be killed, like the guy was killed, Freud was killed in Minneapolis, it is not good or not acceptable for people to go out and, and damage other people's property. We all agree on that. What I do not believe, that the police need extra tools or extra legislation or extra support from the council to walk the street in downtown and help to prevent property damage. And so therefore, I would have love to really be able to support, like I said, I've never seen you this emotional, but this is something that I cannot support. So I'm going to vote against it and I'll encourage my colleagues not to support the extension. I think the police has the tools to do what is required downtown to make sure that in fact, property is not damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm sharing in all the, the drama and trauma where it's in the air right now. I really feel conflicted because I, the anguish that Alder Verveer shared is so deep and so real, yet as Alder Balday said, it's, it doesn't, you know, or Alder, everyone's spoken so well, Alder Evers, Alder Balday, Alder Verveer, to say, you know, it's what we do going forward that, that matters. And part of me says, 5:00 AM, I, it seemed like it could be okay, or I could take some stand. I don't really know that it's, it seemed so difficult. What I raise my hand for is when you look at the resolution, there's that number eight. We need to figure out what that's supposed to look like in the resolution because if you recall from Attorney Paulson earlier, she said we could add things. I don't know that I would add anything. I don't really, and I also want to clarify, I don't think this resolution is an extension. It's just approving what was declared, and it has an end date. So we're not extending it, we're just allowing it to complete as, or maybe it was extended prior, but I mean, it just has an end date and we're not extending it. And so I, I hope that we could talk a little bit about what people see that last number eight should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Morland, you need to unmute. Oh, there you go.
This story is getting very old. I'm very tired of it. We, we go through when something tragic happens, we go through all of the, you know, I'm sad, it's terrible, we need to stop it, but it's not stopping. It's not stopping. People don't have the right to destroy someone else's property. They don't have the right to do that. But if we, as a government body, don't put some things in place to stop what's happening, and I'm, for anybody, because was it Paul Heenan? He wasn't a Black man, he was a white man. We need to put policies in place, we need to value everybody's life. I am a Black mother with a Black son and three Black grandsons. This is not acceptable to me. It is not. There are bad cops, and the people in the police department know exactly who they are. The buck stops with them. You're on the inside, you know who they are. That man in Minnesota had 26 offenses or charges or occurrences on him. He should not have been a police officer. And if we have police officers in the Madison Police Force that have charges or accusations or, or whatever it is against them, they need to be gone. They need to be gone. This is not about a curfew. This is not about a state of emergency. This is about people knowing that they're bad eggs in their department and letting
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, first of all, just say thank you to everybody that, for the, the good words from Alder Verveer to Alder Balday, Alder Morland, Alder Evers, everybody. I mean, I, I think these are all valid points, and it makes it a, a really difficult decision about how to vote on this. Nothing to the extent that Alder Verveer has seen, but I've also been down every morning surveying damage in my district and in Alder Verveer's district. And if you haven't been down there, you must. And every day, I encourage you to go down there and, and witness what's happened and, and talk to people. It's, it's obviously incredibly disconcerting. Alder Verveer referred to this, but I, I believe that on, on the order of 70% of the, the businesses down there are locally owned and operated places. It's not Under Armour and Urban Outfitters only. No, a lot of people work there, but a lot of these places are just tiny little places barely scraping by. And I, I understand that 62% of them are minority or women-owned, and as, also as Alder Verveer referred to, the, the bid was surveying people today, and 41% of the businesses said their inclination was not to reopen. And, you know, maybe some people could say, well, State Street area wasn't for me, so maybe it needs to reinvent itself into something that it wasn't. Maybe that's an okay point, but your, the repercussions of that are devastating to the, the, the small business owners and to the employees, and also to all the people that live down there, as Alder Verveer mentioned. I'm 100% dedicated to more community oversight of the police, to the 177 recommendations of the ad hoc committee, and addressing any of the issues that we have, even that Alder Morland might be referring to. But I'm going to support letting this emergency power order expire as written, and I hope we don't do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bedar.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alder Verveer, we certainly hear you. I have also never seen you in my many years as your colleague, sitting next to you, but not across the screen. And I, I understand the pain, but there is a lot of pain. There is really a lot of pain in this community, there is a lot of pain across the country. And I unfortunately just cannot support curfews, I cannot support... I cannot support what I saw happen downtown um with the amount of military-like force that I saw. Um I do think that there are many different ways um that protests and post-protests and different things that happen during protests can be managed. But I cannot support curfews. Um and I've had this direct conversation certainly with with the mayor to express just my personal deep belief that it is in a way of creating additional escalation of situations. And um I do hope that we find other ways to um to create a space in which people can express and continue expressing their First Amendment until whatever hour they want to express themselves. And that we can do it in a way in which we activate the area enough that there is safety for everybody. Because I can tell you that there are protesters also that want to be safe. Uh so again, I do want you to know that I I hear your pain, but I also hear a lot of other pain.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Presto Jacobo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I just wanna I just wanna thank everyone who's you know, felt comfortable really sharing their emotions throughout all of this, especially you, Mike. I know, you know, you've been because of these last three days, I'm sure you've been, you know, not getting very much sleep and putting so much effort into this. Um so I really appreciate it. And I'm, you know, I'm, I I really do not I I really appreciate what Shiva said as well. I'm I'm not here to, you know, reduce any or dismiss any of those feelings. I'm, you know, here to share what I witnessed. And, you know, this week I I use my privilege as a white cis man and um as an elected official to take part in these protests peacefully. And um, you know, I just kind of felt before I even go into a bit of context of what I saw, like I I wanted to uplift a quote by MLK that said, "A riot is uh the voice of the unheard." And I just, you know, I've been hearing a lot about specific references of violence and looting. And it worries me that, you know, some testimony tonight was, uh you know, clearly um showing a more of a desire to protect property than lives. And, you know, I I think from the beginning, what I witnessed is use of tear gas, uh violence, it's been very liberal. I've seen it shot down every direction of State Street indiscriminately, harming peaceful and violent protesters alike. You know, it's clearly an impossibility to prevent police violence um from harming peaceful protesters. And it's for that reason, the inherent violence of police, that, you know, white allies are showing up to these protests. Um they're showing up to put their bodies in front of police who inherently are violent. And that's, you know, that's a fact that not only I've addressed, but leadership in the city has that there's systemic racism. Uh what what this curfew does is it it prevents more allies from standing between police violence and POC. And, you know, not to mention standing between the psychological uh the psychological pain and impact that this, you know, police violence has. You know, there's there's uh looting and violence that, you know, we heard Chief Wall talk about um the need to respond with violence, and I'll get into that. But like I said, it's indiscriminate. There are peaceful protesters there that will not leave. And I only see uh an option there to uh this curfew is, you know, preventing more uh white allies from standing up and, you know, showing their support and preventing more trauma. And frankly, also, it's it's really impossible also for like white people to understand that trauma. We can talk about getting tear gas as much as we want, but, you know, that's a different experience. It's not um something that I can will ever understand. I also thought it was just important to to recognize that from my experience witnessing all of this, it would be a complete fallacy to say, you know, that tear gas is only used in extreme violent situations and looting. And I have multiple times where I witnessed uh peaceful protesters that because of their presence were the reason, um you know, uh tear gas was used. And I mean, just last night, a protester was sitting in front of this this giant line of police peacefully with an umbrella facing them because obviously he was justifiably worried um that he was gonna get shot with tear gas. And, you know, he he didn't move. He was and then he was shot directly out with tear gas. Um and, you know, there's another where I witnessed someone throw a water bottle. Sure, it, you know, it's full of water, I guess. Um but to me, equating a water bottle to respond with extremely violent tear gas, you know, considered a war crime by the Jima connection seems absurd. And what I'm getting to here is that you really it's an impossibility to separate the curfew from the tactics used by police. You know, they are inextricably linked. You know, whether it's the intent of the city leadership or not, and I think that's also the most important part. It doesn't matter what your intent is. I agree, you know, where the curfew was used to, you know, keep people safe, and that is definitely an honorable intent. But what it ended up doing is putting more POC in harm's way. Um and I think I just think that's a really important part to mention. And, you know, another part too is just like hearing the city that has acknowledged the systemic issues, acknowledged the inherent violence within these systems and, you know, within this community. Why then do we extend a curfew, you know, fully aware that there will be some consequences disproportionately, you know, harming black and brown people? And I I just don't see, you know, after having conversations with protest organizers and talking to people and, you know, we were, we we saw people asking questions about the curfew. This was not, this is not what, you know, they they very clearly stated that the curfew has escalated things. And, you know, I I think it's, you know, doublespeak to say because I I don't know how we can say simultaneously, you know, we hear you, we're listening, when they're saying the opposite of what we're doing. And frankly, I I almost feel like it's policymaking out of fear. And I mean, not to mention, you know, there are peaceful protesters out there. I do see as an affront to peacefully protesting to assemble. You know, and I think a really important point made too is that like this council supporting this resolution does give, you know, if the mayor decides tomorrow night, um that is justified, that, you know, we could be under another occupation or a curfew tomorrow night. And I, based on, you know, past decisions made under emergency order, what caused violence, what caused all this violence and destruction was, you know, protesters being peaceful, maybe a few instigators, uh you know, you use tear gas against them. Despite warnings, uh, you know, police were violently engaging with protesters. And it wasn't just, you know, it wasn't just uh restricted to those who were looting. And I I can go on and on about all the different instances I've seen over these past nights where, you know, multiple peaceful protesters, this just happened. And because, you know, this were curfew, I I can't help but think that, you know, there are a lot of white allies who just felt, no, I don't want to risk arrest. And now there's a lot of trauma in the community because of it. And, you know, I I also just think that, you know, when when we also are like lying to a crowd of black and just people of color, especially young people and, you know, talking about the curfew, it's it's, you know, it's it's really for that reason and just so many that I just, I don't think I can support this because it implies, you know, trust that the right decision we made. And I'm and I know that, you know, that there's been lots of learning from, you know, the mistakes that have been made that caused us this point, but I just do not feel that we, because black and brown lives are, you know, are on the table here, like it's it's not worth, um, you know, saying this where we could be pursuing other methods of de-escalation and, um, you know, not using these violent tactics that are perpetuating it. So, you know, I mean, just tonight too, peaceful protesters have been uh people were talking about the the storm, a peaceful protest, those were all peaceful protesters. They were trying to run inside and um get somewhere and everyone was locking them out. Um and I'm like, it's decisions and lack of decisions like that, you know, that make me uncomfortable casting my vote um with this extension. So again, I really appreciate it, uh, you know, what everyone said tonight. I'm, you know, I don't mean to dismiss, you know, any emotions and any feelings about all of this. I just I feel having witnessed this and, um, you know, seeing the militarized occupation and just having these conversations and hearing the trauma that is being perpetuated. And again, noticing how it's the curfew and police tactics are going to be inextricably linked, whether it's our intent or not. I feel, you know, as a white ally, you know, I have to be voting against this curfew. You know, I I really encourage um the rest of you to do so as well, um because, you know, frankly, this is, this is, the protesters have been talking about this. And it's, you know, something that I I think very clearly has perpetuated a lot of violence um and has created more you know, distrust and, um, you know, the want to actually incite more. So yeah, I I will not be supporting this. And I encourage the rest of the rest of you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Alder Mahvi, I I hear you. I feel your pain. I feel similarly emotional like you. I feel angry. I went there on Sunday morning, tried to clean graffiti. I feel that pain. I also feel the pain of the other side of the people too as well. Uh I have my own stories where I got discriminated. There is a structural racism, structural discrimination. We as a policymaker need to create policies, make policies to address those and make things better. I I was in DC with my wife and two-year-old. And this is just sharing one incident about how systematically racism is with law enforcement. Yes, they stopped me and this they said they want to check the milk bottle and all the gears. My wife was holding all the gear and I only had a kid with me. So I said, and they said they want to check me. And they said, you want to check? And my wife is white blonde. And again, here's a white privilege. So they said, I said, if you want to check, you should check my wife because she's holding all the luggage. And they said, we are going to check you. They also want to check for the drugs, scan your fingers, check for drugs. So there is a systematic racism. And when I try to oppose that, they tried me to detain or take me in a different room. Anyhow, I have to listen, follow the instruction. They found nothing as innocent residents. So I I so this is only one example. I feel stressed, anxiety on a airport as a Middle Eastern, uh South Asian person. Black community, our brown community feel similar stress and the experience they had living in US, this need to be changed. We really need to look into how we as a leader, other leaders can work together to move forward in the right direction. I I'm not, I do not, as Alder Bivier you said, solution is not uh solution is not a curfew. Police does have other strategies. But this time, I'm I'm gonna stand with you, support you. And I hope moving forward, we should not do any curfews. We find a way how we can systematically work better and and end this racism. I think so the resolution which we propose six zero seven six four. I hope by looking into that, we can improve and move forward together. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Our freshman Alder, our newly uh anointed Alder, Alder Max, because I can't say your last name very well, uh made some really good points. And I am concerned that extending the curfew or leaving the option for that is unacceptable. And I am also want to repeat an earlier point. The, we haven't responded to fifteen hundred emails, which were, I think, more than all the emails that we got on the F-35s and Edgewood combined. And I think that's a a message that I don't want to have sent to our community that's in pain. So I this is very, this is not an easy vote, and I don't like to appear to be struggling with my vote, but I indeed am. But I'm, I know I indicated, Alder Bivier, that I would side with you on this. But I I think I'm obligated morally to stand with those who are in deep pain of what George Floyd's murder has evoked in them. Any experience of trauma evokes past trauma. And that's what we're dealing with right now. That doesn't excuse the rioting. That doesn't excuse the property damage. A portion of that that's taking place is not at all connected to the work of change, the work of revolutionary change, the work of structural change. And I decry that. And I I'm pretty sure that those who have been leading the protests in our community don't are not down with that either. But they know that it sends the message that people are fed up. So we're at a pivotal point. Uh, you know, we're called in the scriptures to weep with those who weep. People are weeping on both sides of this. But I'm gonna weep with those who experienced four hundred years of oppression in this country. And and for those who have, for years in Madison, because of the color of their skin, feel like this place is not welcoming for them. And so I I I'm changing my vote and I will not be supporting this extension. Let it end uh now and let's find other ways to move forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue at this moment.
I would like to say something. President Carter. You know, it's interesting, well, two things are interesting. The one thing that I keep hearing is the institutionalized racism. And I think of my father, who was passed away at ninety-seven. And this is the buzzword of today. But racism has been with us, as Alder Balde said on Saturday, four hundred years. And that's a long time to turn it around. It's a long time to turn it around. I believe that we do need to turn it around. Don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is, four hundred years reversing, let's just try to reverse the last ten years, the last twenty years. It's hard to reverse four hundred years. And I'm just saying that because as our seniors pass away, who actually lived, born, raised, became adults during segregation. The memories of that four hundred years of discrimination and racism shifts, shifts. I never had to drink from the colored-only water fountain, but my dad did. Or go to the colored-only restroom, but my dad did. As we lose those seniors, we are losing the As we lose those seniors, we are losing the perspective of what has been and where we're going. And it's going to take all of us across the board, city to city, state to state, to change that narrative. And it's not going to be overnight. I just had to say that because several people talked about that. And every time we talk about institutional racism, although I know it's alive and well, I always think of what my dad went through. How he survived segregation. I still don't know how he survived segregation. Obviously, I'm thrilled that he did because I wouldn't be here. Getting to what we are to talk about today. Sorry, I had to do that sidebar. I just was, I felt that I had to say something. So getting to the, the essence of the now, which is number 132. I am going to support the people that live and work, et cetera, on State Street. And I agree with a lot of you. But I also know how fearful I would be regardless of color. If I knew there was something dangerous like looting, like breaking windows and I'm sleeping upstairs. I know how I would feel like with that were to happen. So I am going to support it. And again, I will say that I've never seen Mike so emotional. And I, I, that just shows you how much he cares for his constituents. I can tell you that, um, when there was a murder a half a block from my house, 2016, only one person called me to ask me how my family was doing. One person in this chamber. We represent our district, but we also represent the city of Madison. We represent, no matter how you look at it, we represent the good, the bad, the ugly. And I would love to say the bad and the ugly step to the side because I only want to represent the good. But the reality is I, and I represent everybody when we get to this chamber. And we also represent our district. And sometimes it conflicts like it does tonight. But I'm gonna represent and stand by shoulder to shoulder with Alder Vavir on this. I also think is interesting that the block in which George Floyd died a three-block radius, none of those stores were destroyed because the people came out and said, not here. Five blocks down the way, everything is destroyed. I say that because they interviewed a man that has saved up 10 years' worth of salary to, salary to open up a store that was looted. And he was crying and he said, "I don't have any insurance. I don't have any money. I put everything I had into this." And while he was being interviewed, people came back to steal the safe with the reporter standing there. I say that not to say that everybody on State Street is this man. I know that the corporate stores probably can reopen. But I say that to say, when you open up your own business, 99.9% of the time, you put everything you got in that business. There's no cushion. And I feel for them. But I also feel for the people that are living above these stores and not knowing what's going out, going on out on the street. And again, I have to reflect on my father because he lived during dangerous times. And how scared he was on multiple times where he didn't know exactly what's gonna, what's going on. But tonight, I have to push all that away and I have to stand by the folks that live on this street that we've made so popular that are in fear. And I also have to stand by not the corporate stores who have insurance and can bring in more stuff, but the folks that have put everything, that just need a little cushion of hope. And I pray, I pray that our protesters, our peaceful protesters continue to protest in peace. Because what happened to George Foreman, I mean, oh Lord, what happened to George Floyd should be the last, should be the last name on that list. And that's what I'm praying for tonight, that we end it with George. We shouldn't have put George on there, but we're going to end it with George Floyd. And I am going to stand by shoulder to shoulder in solidarity with Alder Vavir on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wasn't sure that I was going to speak on this. I, I do think that, um, there has been a lot of really heartfelt emotion, particularly from Alder Vavir, um, about the situation. And it is a very tough situation. I do have to say though, that given the systemic and the institutional racism in our society now, based on, um, you know, I'm going to go back an extra hundred years and say 500 years of colonialism, of, of bondage and the effects that they have now on today's society, that it's fair to think that, that this is going to be putting more black folks, more, um, brown folks in potential danger. And I don't feel okay extending that. I, I very much, um, share the concern about safety of the folks that live in the area. But I am confident that our police department, um, has the tools available to, um, to, to continue to do the work that they need to do in order to keep folks safe. Um, and I can't support extending the curfew. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. Uh, has been moved and seconded.
I would like to have a roll call.
A roll call vote has been requested as anticipated. So I will, um, unmute you all, ask staff to keep themselves muted and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. I know some members are still showing as muted.
All right, let's try again.
Thank you.
All right. Some of you may need to unmute yourselves, um, on your own.
Alder Furman.
Yes.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney.
Aye.
Harrington McKenney, aye. Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennig's excuse. Alder Campbell.
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemmer.
Obstand.
Alder Lemmer, abstain. Alder Martin.
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Morland.
No.
Alder Morland, no. Alder Presto Giacomo.
No.
Alder Presto Giacomo, no. Alder Rummel.
No.
Alder Rummel, no. Alder Skidmore.
Aye.
Or Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney. Okay, thank you. Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Vavir.
Aye.
Alder Vavir, aye. Alder Abbas.
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Aburaz.
Aye.
Alder Aburaz, aye. Alder Balday. Sorry, was that no?
Esse no.
Thank you. Alder Balday, no. Alder Bedar.
No.
Alder Bedar, no. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster. No, sorry. Thank you very much. Alder Foster, no. We have nine ayes, nine noes, one abstain.
Uh, with nine ayes and nine noes, the motion fails. And that brings us to item number 133. And we do have a number of registrants. All right, so on item number 133, Legis 60763, denouncing the murders of African-Americans across the United States of America without consequence. We will start with I.S. Jones of Milwaukee Street in support wishing to speak. Is I.S. still with us?
Um, no, she's not.
All right, then we'll move on to Nicholas Davies of Seago Road in support. Uh, I'm sorry, the rest are not wishing to speak. But we have 30 in support and one opposed. And I believe the list of names is available to you on item 133. Um, so then, uh, President Carter, a motion? Uh, excuse me, President Carter, one moment. I forgot to mute folks again. So, uh, now, President Carter. For a motion on 133.
Yeah, 133, Legis 60763, I move adoption.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any opposition to, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 133. Alder Morland.
Whereas the city of Madison Common Council continues to take steps to ensure that policies and procedures of the Madison Police Department do not result in similar outcomes of murders of unarmed black persons. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Madison Common Council denounces the actions of former Minneapolis Police Officer Derek Chauvin in the murder of George Floyd on May 26, 2020. And be it further resolved that the common council acknowledge that not all police officers are racist. However, Derek Chauvin's actions were deplorable, horrific and infuriating. We also deplore the actions of the officers who stood by and did nothing and expect them to be held accountable as well with charges. And be it further resolved that we ask and expect of all police departments, including the Madison Police Department, to hold themselves accountable. The community depends on police departments from the top to the bottom to act in a way that if they see another officer doing something that is unsafe, out of standard operating procedures, unacceptable, illegal, or someone's life is in danger as a result of their actions, to step in and stop it. And I think I started this wrong. I'm sorry. So I'm going back again. Whereas Madison's Common Council passed a resolution last year recognizing the presence, struggles and resilience of African-Americans over 400 years since landing on the shores of Virginia as slaves. And whereas on October 15th, 2019, Madison's Common Council passed a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis. And whereas on June 17th, 2009, the Common Council passed a resolution condemning hate motivated violence. And whereas Madison has experienced its share of police-involved violence against unarmed African-American men. And whereas we have witnessed the murders of unarmed African-American men and women at the hands of law enforcement, from Sandra Bland to Breonna Taylor to Mike Brown, Eric Garner, Freddie Gray, Amon Arbery, Tony Robinson to now George Floyd. Whereas the Common Council grieves and empathizes with the hurt of the African-American community in Madison and across the United States. And whereas the Trump administration has systematically weakened the civil rights division of the Department of Justice responsible for rooting out racial prejudices and law enforcement and criminal justice practices. And I'm not going to read the other wheres that I just read. Be it further resolved that the city of Madison Common Council challenges all residents of Madison, Wisconsin and nationwide to amplify their voices in upcoming elections to elevate those who will work towards the cause of eradicating the dual justice systems in America and implement reforms institutionally. With that, I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Alder Morland. President Carter.
Before I say second, there is a birthday boy in the house and that is Alder Tag. Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Alder Evers. And so it is moved by Alder Morland and seconded by President Carter to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Alder Balday.
So no, I was just gonna ask, I was gonna adjourn without voting on it, but I see that now you're asking for a vote. Thank you.
I am. Alder Harrington McKenney, you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. Um, I want to invite those who choose to, uh, join the faith community Sunday at, um, 6:09. There will be a, a peace march that will, uh, start, uh, in the area. And so, uh, all faiths will be, all faiths will be joining. It'll be 6:09. And please, if you are a person of faith or if you are some of the ones that express change that needs to happen, come out and let's do shoulder to shoulder and pray for change. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKenney. All right. Uh, wait, wait, Alder Evers, birthday boy?
Well, it's not my birthday, but I will take the greetings. My birthday comes up on June 13th, so if you want to make it my birthday, 12 days, 10, 11 days, that's fine by me.
Take it, Alder. All right. Now, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.